Evening and welcome to the November seventeenth meeting of the Town Council. If you would please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, announcements, the only announcements I have are our regular meetings for the month of December, December first and December fifteenth, Thursdays at seven PM here in the Matthew Thornton Room. And on January fifth, beginning at six thirty PM, we'll have our first budget meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tax bills were mailed, will be mailed on November twenty ninth and due on December thirtieth. We did get the, we did get the tax rate in later than we wanted. It's here. Tax rate is seventeen dollars and thirty-eight cents per thousand. And like I said, the bills will be mailed on the twenty ninth and they do December thirtieth. You can also go online and check the kiosk starting next week for what your tax bill looks like. The Friends of the Merrimack Public Library are holding their third annual holiday wreath auction. View the donated wreaths in the lower hallway of the library and write your bid on the clipboard under the wreath. These are great, these, the, let me do this one more time, sorry. These are great items to give as gifts or to decorate your own home. The auction ends on November thirtieth. The Rotary X Christmas Tree Sales at Watson Park are back again this year. They'll be here beginning right after Thanksgiving, twenty-seventh of November, and they'll run until they are sold out. Lastly, the Town of Merrimack is holding their annual food drive. Unexpired can of food and non-perishable items will be accepted through December thirty-first and can be dropped off at the following locations. Highway Equipment Maintenance Complex, seventy-six Turkey Hill Road. The Fire Department, four thirty-two Daniel Webster Highway, or Nada Cook Road. The Police Department, thirty-one Babuza Lake Road. The Public Library, four seventy Daniel Webster Highway. Downstairs at the lower level at Town Hall in Public Works Administration area. Town Hall upper level at six Babuza Lake Road. The transportation recycling building at Farron Road. Some suggested items to donate are toiletries and hygiene products, canned soups, applesauce, pasta sauce, macaroni and cheese, fruit cups, crackers, cereal, granola bars, diapers, wipes, baby formula, and other items similar to those. Please help us out. All the food that gets donated will be distributed to local food pantries in Merrimack. And that used to be the battle of the badges versus the hard hats, but it went over so well that we have now expanded it to all these different locations. So help us, please donate food.
All right, next on the agenda, comments from the press or public. If you would like to address the council, you could come to this table here or there's no mic over, the mic right behind there. Seeing no one. Next, no resignations, recognitions or retirements. So first on appointments, we have the annual review with the Conservation Commission. Town of Merrimack Charter, section six dash six, at least annually, there should be an annual review with the Conservation Commission. This agenda item is to highlight the commission's significant actions, current projects, anticipated actions, and to raise any concerns the council should know about or could act upon. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. All right, our annual review, this is for the last year for the agenda. We kept it pretty similar to last year. Hopefully we'll hit on all the topics, all the points you want to hear about. If not, at the end, if we fell short in some way, let me know and I'll make sure we amend this for next year. To start with our, you know, here's our membership, and this truly is an embarrassment of riches here. Not only that, for the third straight year, I can come here and show you a slide that doesn't have any vacancies on it. The real success story here is just some of the longevity. I did some back of the napkin math when I was preparing to present to you. And there's somewhere between fifty-five and sixty years of service, you know, that these members have to the Merrimack Conservation Commission. So certainly we're fortunate for that. And there has been turnover, so it just speaks to some of the longer-term members. Here's our mission, the RSA and the statute and so forth. Hopefully I'll convince you before the end of this presentation that we're hitting on all these five bullets. And we're very fortunate that that bottom bullet, one thousand six hundred acres, that's a lot of, that's a lot of property in town, so we're fortunate for that. And we try to be good stewards of all, every, every one of those acres. Just in terms of our finances here, not a lot of change from last year. You'll see that Fund fifty-three number probably will go down. We have authorized a couple of expansions recently, an NRPC mapping update. And I can talk a little bit more about that, along with some building projects, just some bridge rehab stuff, lumber to support those initiatives. And on this next slide, I have a better breakout really of what that annual budget looks like. Yeah. Yep. This is what that annual budget looks like. Again, this is, these were submitted, these, these were what were proposed for the coming year, but not much different than last year. I think the, the membership to the NHACC has gone up fifty dollars, but there's tremendous value that we derive from that annually, to include the conference, which we, we just attended this month. Hopefully this isn't too small to read on your screens, just, and I won't go through all of these. You have them in your packets, but these are some of our accomplishments from the last, you know, from the previous twelve months. Some of the ones were probably worth talking to. One, you were instrumental in that first one, the, you know, the completion of chapter one eleven. We brought Tim Tenhae back out of retirement. He came before you and spoke a few times and, and we finally, that was, that was a work in progress for a lot of years, but it was really important because I think we were close to twenty years since the last revision had, had been done. And as you remember, it took, it really combined all sixty-six parcels and made something that was, that was current and relevant and, and addressed how the uses and the needs have changed since the, the last revision of that chapter one eleven. And hopefully made it a lot simpler also. Some of the others, you know, the seedling giveaway continues to be incredibly popular. I think we saw some of you during the last one. We'll, we'll make sure we get that advertised. That'll be the, in fact, I can tell you now, spoiler alert, that will be the Saturday before Mother's Day this year. We'll refresh the assortment every year. We spend a lot of time talking about the assortment and what, what is right for that assortment. There's a lot of passion behind that, but we'll, we'll come with a, you know, the New Hampshire Nursery, State of New Hampshire Nursery does a fantastic job. And we'll put that order in soon to make sure we show up there. We did adopt a new rules of procedure and we really got a tremendous amount of support from Town Hall doing that, you know. Tim and his group really spent some time and it's, it's a rules of procedure that it's made us more efficient, but it also, it resembles more what the other boards and commissions in town have. So we've derived some benefit from that. And, and, and we continue, we did that last bullet on there. We spent a lot of time down at, down at Scolar property, looking at that boat ramp. We had Garrett Grossenkamp, who was the, the director of the State of New Hampshire program that does, you know, enhances boat access to some of the, the premier waterways. He was, the project down in Nashway, he was the coordinator for that. So we've spent a lot of time exploring that boat ramp. We didn't hear all the answers we wanted to hear, but we, he gave us a pretty realistic assessment of what that boat ramp can be and, and what it could be and what some of the limitations are. And, you know, the primary limitation just being you have to pass under that railroad trestle to get to it. You know, and it's, you know, the previous slide said, you know, bridge rebuilds. Here's just the picture of it. This was recently completed. We got a talented group out there of volunteers that did a replacement of the North, North Loop Trail at Wildcat Falls. I don't know if any of you have been out there to see that, but fantastic job. They did constructing the new bridge. The old bridge was tired, but the old bridge wasn't tired to the extent that they weren't able to, these planks here that you see in this picture were actually carried out of the woods at Wildcat Falls and trekked into the woods at Greater, or trekked down the trail at Greater Woods to do a, there was a bridge that was totally tired at Greater Woods. So they used some of the, the salvage planks and so forth. I think, thank Mike, he was behind both of those projects, but rebuilt this one on the Salamander Trail. Again, some of the other things we accomplished, and I won't talk, you can see them there. I won't talk about all of them. We do continue to replace the duck boxes. The duck, the wood ducks had a fantastic year last year. Normally when we go out there, we wait until the ponds harden and so forth and we can get on, on top of them. But normally we'll find a lot of eggs that did not hatch. They had a bumper crop last year. A lot, there were a lot of hatched eggs, a lot of egg remnants and so forth. And we did, someone sent us some fantastic pictures of, of young wood ducks in the spring. So you see them out there, that's how we do it. We just, we need a couple of cold weeks so we can track out there and get them. Some of the other items on here, we continue to use that open space survey. That was something, GZA, we commissioned them to do that two or three years ago. With one thousand six hundred acres, we have a lot of properties. It's not, you know, there are a few that have been identified that we just keep an eye on, but that's the tool we use to do that. We participated in the winter carnival this year. It was good to be back at that. The weather couldn't have been better for that, but it was nice. It was a good opportunity to connect with, the turnout was fantastic. And we were just able to show up there and have a presence and talk to people about some of the properties, ones that they may, may not have known that, that are town properties. And finally, those two pictures, that one on the left, that's us about a month ago. Six of us, along with some members of the public showed up and we did that annual review. That's an obligation we have to the State of New Hampshire as part of that land conservation and investment program to go out and walk the boundaries of that, make sure that the right things are happening out there and there haven't been incursions. Fortunately, we do note a lot of invasive species out there, but there's not a lot that can be done with that and it seems relatively contained. The picture on the right is actually something, that was a, some work we'd done. We were approached by a wildlife rehabilitator. That, that's this fellow on my, on my left here, helping release a fox that had been rehabilitated on one of the town properties. So they approached us about doing this thing a lot. Sometimes those may be animals that were injured from this community. And they really, they, you know, we vetted them pretty well. They, they put a lot of thought into where it's appropriate to release these. They're not in someone's backyard, but we have some pretty big parcels and it's the right thing to do to reintroduce those. Some of our goals for 2023, obviously we continue to do the parcel maintenance. That's fun for a lot of us and that does consume a great, you know, great portion of preponderance of our volunteer hours go toward those things. We'll continue to do the outreach items, you know, the winter carnival, the seedling giveaway and those things. We are, we have just recently agreed with NRPC, like I said, to do a trail refresh. So one of the important things that they'll do there is they'll take the chapter one eleven revisions that, that you approved and make sure our trail maps reflect those new revisions. We'll, we'll update, refresh the QR codes. And since NRPC did the initial mapping, and those are some fantastic maps, those new, those Merrimack maps have, that, that other communities around us, Amherst, Nashua, have really kind of emulated the way we went about doing that. And they've used the same program, but it, the legwork involved will be a lot less because they did the original mapping. The only one they're going to have to go out and actually walk will be, will be what, Scolar, because that wasn't part of the original mapping and any trails that have moved since then. Fields Farm, you know, and, and Town Hall, Community Development is working with us on, on the Fields Farm. We just want to make sure we have public access that doesn't cross private properties. And there have been, there have been some bumps in the road in, in establishing a trail ahead for that. We're not really sure what the path of least resistance is, so I can't give you that solution now, but that is something that, that Tim and Robert Price are working with us on to try to develop and see what the next steps to move forward are on that. And again, we are working with County Forester. Pretty recently, we've been working with the County Forester. There are some invasive species down at Scolar that we really would like to control better than we are now, just because of their proximity to the Merrimack River. We don't, if we can do something with it now and do the right thing, perhaps it'll prevent it from going into the river and becoming Nashua's problem or Lowell's problem. Few more items, goals for 2023. You know, a lot of this is just recurring business, but obviously the first one, you know, we, we do get a pretty significant number of, of questions and comments from the public. They, you know, they'll email us regarding beaver, beaver management and different beaver best practices. And really, other than waiting for them to move somewhere else, there is no great management strategy, but people, people are concerned when they see their, their hibiscus is being eaten or they're seeing tree damage in their backyard. And I think it's helped, I know we, the, the members we've interacted with over the past year have been appreciative that at least we'll, one of us will try to show up and look at it and, and talk to them about the problem and why it's there and, and how those problems often move year after year after year. Improved trail marking, if you've been out on the properties, you will see we've got a pretty, we have gotten a lot of new trail signing. It was tastefully done. There's a volunteer in town that's been doing those for us. We've just been providing him with the cedar and they're fantastic looking signs. But we, we got a number of trails that we hope to continue doing that. And that punch list of projects, really what we're looking at there is as volunteers approach us, we'd like to have something, especially, you know, scouts that want something meaningful. You know, we've got a few in town that, a lot of the scouts have come up with their own proposals, but we'd like to have a list of, of ideas that we can present to them if, if they are looking for that sort of thing. These photos, you know, this is just another thing, we, we were approached by, what's her name? Sorry, the, Brenda Durant is the Language Arts Coordinator at the middle school. And she approached us, said she had a group, a walking group, a photography walking group, she called it. And this was just some photos that, of Greater Woods that that group took, the Q1 Flex Photography Group took at Greater Woods. And she was nice enough to share, the students were nice enough to share that with us. Where the town can help, I know with the Merrill's Marauder Bridge, it's not usable now. There's no easy solution for that. We just ask that you keep that in mind if there is some, an opportunity at some point where a grant to do that sort of thing presents itself. That was, you know, it was, it's unfortunate we don't have the use of that now. But, you know, obviously can, if you continue to, you know, provide us feedback, if we're not giving you something you'd like, please don't be bashful. Ask us, we'd like, we always like to take on whatever, whatever ideas you ask us to attack. In the Fields Farm piece, I've talked about that. We're really not sure at this point what the next step is. You know, a year from now or down the road, that may involve Town Council. If it does, we'll, we'll come back to and talk to you about that at that time. And I know this sounds corny and everyone says it, but we truly mean it. We are appreciative for all the help we get. It's, it's so much, I couldn't even make, I wanted to make a list of all the ways that this commission gets support from the town and the Town Hall and the Town Manager and all the staff in all the various departments. But it is, whenever we're, we try not to over ask, but whenever we've asked, the, the support has always been overwhelming. Finally, I'd just leave you with a few more pictures before I open up to press questions. On one of the previous slides, I had mentioned we were working with a PhD student for UNH. These, these critters are out on our properties and this is, these were taken on three different properties. That's not even the same bobcat. But he was kind enough to give these to us. He's been doing, he's been doing this research for a year, but it sounds like he might have taken a permanent position at UNH as, as a faculty. So this program, he asked us if he could do this for another three years. So at least for another three years, and it was fantastic. He basically gave us a, an species inventory for the, for the different parks that he was working on, which was nice to know. It's not something we probably published or probably will publish, but you know, maybe we'll consolidate all three parcels and put it together. But it's an amazing number of species and these, these photographs, they look like something that had a national degree geographic or something. Really, did I skip anything, Mike?
You did awesome.
So your turn now, you can field the questions.
Perfect. Thanks, Steve, Mike. I really appreciate it. This, this is always a great committee, that you guys do amazing stuff. And, and that bobcat looked very sharp, I have to say. Does anybody have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just want to add that, you know, the, the amount of work that not only the Conservation Commission, but the subcommittees put in, in Merrimack, the volunteer hours is just phenomenal. I don't think I had appreciation of it until you sit on the Conservation Commission and you hear all the projects, all the things that the subcommittees are doing when they give their reports to the Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission is probably a fraction of a percent of the hours that they provide to give back to Merrimack. And then I also wanted to say, you know, it looked like the Conservation Commission was full based on that one slide, but there's a lot of subcommittees out there. And so there's always room for additional volunteer work. Even the, the new subcommittee that you talked about, Fields Farm, you know, that'll be standing up this year. So there's plenty of opportunities for additional volunteer work. And even if there, you, you don't want to do an actual seat on a subcommittee or the Conservation Commission, there's still plenty of work to do out in these areas. So if anybody is out there in the public thinking about volunteering, Conservation Commission is a good place to reach out to.
Thank you.
Thanks. How do you reach out to the Conservation Committee? Is there, you have a website that's specific or the people could look to see what kind of job?
Merrimack, Merrimack Outdoors.
Merrimack Outdoors?
Yeah.
Dot org.
Dot org. Dot org.
Okay. I could just add that I really appreciate the work you guys do managing sixteen hundred acres is quite a bit for a volunteer organization. And I know you guys spend a fair amount of time out there working on them and stuff like that. So I, I appreciate that a lot. And, but I wanted to ask you if you could amplify a little bit, Fields Farm. I guess I'm not remembering or not familiar with what's the situation out of Fields Farm or what, what even is that property? I've heard of a lot of.
So you know where Tamezan Drive is off of Amherst Road?
Yep.
Just past Horse Hill. So there's property along the Sahigan River there. And one thing that's kind of fell through that we were hoping for, so when they built that development off Tamezan, I can't remember the name of the development, we were supposed to get some of the land behind there that was going to join up with that property. And that was going to help give us access to that property. And some, some legalities didn't happen with some of those parcels. And so I think that's what we're trying to work out with the town still. You know, to try to find a solution to that so we can get some of that property behind that housing development that we were supposed to get.
Along the river there too.
Yeah, and then join that with the river and that would be a good access point for, for that property. Right now, we kind of just have people using it on their own. And it's kind of like unmanaged right now.
Yeah. I think it's fair to say that the property was transferred, a lot of the property. It's just the access to the property doesn't exist right now.
Right, Fields Farm has been there for a while. I forget the acreage of that. But when they built that development, we were there, we were supposed to get a portion, the land behind there that was watering the river. And because of some of the, I don't know the details of this, but because of some of the properties, the legalities of, of having that, somehow it wound up with that property owner who, whose house lot that was and not part of that general land that was going to get turned over. Now it's kind of a mess, but I don't know the exact details, so.
That's, that's, I was just trying to remember what Field Farms was and where it was. Does, does that property back there above Amherst Street at all? Or is it just back up by the river, the original property that you're trying to?
Yeah, Fields Farms between Amherst Road and the Sahigan River.
Okay.
Yeah, it almost goes up to the bridge.
Amherst Road?
Amherst Road, yeah, but you know, there is frontage and there's some private property there also. And it goes up pretty much to where the, the bridge is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I, we discussed this at one point a year or two ago and I thought, I thought there was some type of access off Amherst Road. So I'm not, I'm not, you know better than me, you're part of that whole detail.
There's no place to park or anything right now.
Right, and I recognize that as the issue, but I thought we had an access point anyhow.
Not, not official.
Yeah. Okay, very good.
Not a.
Well, it's a good thing for you guys to keep working on then, right?
There we go.
Yeah, and I know Tim Thompson, Robert Price are actively engaged in it. Yes, it would be, there's no simple path forward, but they, they'll, they'll come up with a couple of options for us. They've committed to doing that.
Perfect. Great, well, thank you for that clarification and thank you for the work you guys do.
Any, Nancy?
I just wanted to say thank you too. I am amazed at the number of subcommittees and the number of man-hours in different places that you guys put in. And I see the photographs on Facebook and, and the, you know, your report was great. And, you know, to look at the photos of, we have wildlife alive and have a habitat because of the work you do. So I just want to say thank you to all of you that, that do that, because I know it takes a team to, to, and any volunteers, I know that you guys could, would be happy to have, have help. So thank you.
I appreciate that. Mike mentioned our, the Merrimack Outdoors website, but I shouldn't have mentioned, I was remiss not to mention the two ladies in the back room who field, you know, a lion's share of those emails. We do get a lot of questions, you know, is this trail open? You know, I, I saw this on this trail, should I be worried? Is there poison ivy, you know, is there poison ivy here or whatever? And, and Gina and Ellen certainly spent, spent a lot of time responding to us in a timely fashion. You know, getting back to responding to people's questions.
Yep, very, very good. You all set? All right. Thanks, Steve. Thanks, Mike. We appreciate all your efforts. See you next year.
Good see you.
Thanks, guys.
Next on the agenda is our Town of Merrimack Charter, Article Six, Section Six. At least annually, there should be a review with the zoning board of adjustment. Agenda items to highlight the board's significant actions, current projects, anticipated actions, and to raise any concerns the council should know about or could act upon. Rich is here, ready to speak to us about their past year.
Okay, so, good evening, Town Council. I know usually we come up here and talk about things like what we saw the most of. And I know in past years, we've had a lot of appeals, which is not the case this year, which is always good. It's nice to see fewer appeals because those tend to set precedence and we don't like to do that. So as far as this year, Rodney is now our, our vice chair, so he's here as well. Something that we have seen a little bit of, that I haven't seen before in previous years is that we've had quite a number of, well, probably three or four, variances in the last year where there were businesses that had some type of an onsite, like an apartment onsite. And it's something that we haven't really seen in the past because I think that fire code dictates that that stuff has to get approved, but in the past, it just, it was not something that went in front of us. So we have been seeing more variances where businesses particularly have a residential component to them. One of them was an ambulatory service having, you know, like a place for emergency responders to, to sleep over. Something that's been in place for a while, but we didn't know about it. So it ended up getting brought up as a variance. So it's nice to see that because it means that as a town, we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's. And it's not the kind of thing that I think that as a board, we're, we're necessarily against because, I mean, especially in the case of the ambulatory service, they really need that space. So it, it's nice to see that there's a closer eye on administrative work so that we can, we can see these cases. At the same time though, they are variances that we need to approve, so. I guess, do you have anything you want to add, Ron?
Sound it up.
So, been a fun year.
Been a fun year. Anybody have any questions or thoughts, comments? Nancy?
You prob, you probably don't have the answer to this. Of the total, you can just make a guess, of a total variance request that you have provided, what's the percentage you approve versus disapprove?
That's a good question. If I had to go with this blindly, I'd say probably eighty to ninety percent are approved. But then again, when you look at what our variances are, a lot of them are things like residents who want to build a garage on a house that doesn't have a garage in a neighborhood where every house has a garage because they don't meet certain dimensional requirements to, to construct. So in, in those particular cases, it makes total sense to grant a variance because these are people that want their house to look like everybody else's house. And that's, I think, a very. Because these are people that want their house to look like everybody else's house. And that's, I think, a very fair request. Although every once in a while, we will get some kind of an offshoot variance that I can't think of any off the top of my head. I don't know if you can, Rodney, where we.
I was just thinking, a, a number of them are also where if somebody tears down a shed. That's kind of grandfathered in when they bought it and they want to rebuild. And now that they're rebuilding, they're not in the boundaries. They're coming in, can we build it eighteen feet from the boundary line rather than twenty feet?
So they're very simple requests.
Yeah. Cause a lot of these ordinances were established in the eighties. And so some of these houses that predate these ordinances. They're grandfathered in as long as they don't rebuild. We see that a lot with decks as well. Where people want to tear down a rotting deck, but in order to put a new one up, they now need a variance. So.
Sure. Rich, what I've noticed on occasion is business will come in and they claim that they have a hardship financially because they can't do certain things with their properties. And I think of one at the north end of town that was built. I want to say in the very late eighties. So it was a long time. And then they more recently, a few years ago, came and asked for a variance to change the use on, on Route Three. What I've, I've seen is others have come forward over the past few years and it's for a very short window of time. And so I guess. Nothing in particular, but I, I'm, I'm hoping that the zoning board will not take a, a business's poor business decision to purchase something. That was out of whack in pricing or whatever, and they now can't make the numbers work. That shouldn't be a hardship, I don't think, for the town. Right away. I just, you know, a bad investment is on, on the business owner or the person. It's not on the community. And so those seem to happen a little bit more frequently and it might be appropriate, nothing in particular, but I just, I just. I just see those happening and it, you know, it just puts up little flags for me.
I think it really depends on the request. So for example, one thing that we see more of now than I think we ever have is a, a need for residential type use. So we do get requests where one that we had was a. It was a, it was like a business complex. I don't know what businesses were in it prior, but it was being converted over into. Apartments. I don't remember if they were under the category of luxury apartments like the ones by. By Exit Ten, but you know, in cases like that, I would say that is a financial hardship for a business owner if they can't lease their land. However, there are absolutely times where you're right, where we will fight the unnecessary hardship. If it is a case where somebody just bought a plot of land and they want to just build something that doesn't fit. I think that I would agree with you that there are times where it, some things seem a little bit more lenient. Across the board. But I, I, I would say that as much as I may agree or disagree with the way something is going. I would never try to, in any way. How do I want to phrase this? I would not want to sway the opinions of the board. And I actually have a, a very high level of respect for the board. So it's, uh, I, I would agree with you. But I think that, you know, there are times when it's appropriate to look at the unnecessary hardship of a business, whereas there are times where it's really inappropriate. Cause you're right, there are definitely times where people will buy property and then realize they just can't build. I think we had a, a hotel recently where that was happening, where somebody just bought a property and wanted to slap a hotel into it or something along those lines. I'm trying to remember where that was, but.
Yeah. There was an apartment downtown-ish that they wanted to put like a three-story apartment building in the middle. And it, it just would not work. And. We've had some hearty conversations on the board when people come in front of us. I mean, we're not all in lockstep all the time by any means. So when somebody comes up in front of us, I mean, just recently, there was a conversation that it was a, a tight vote. And we probably talked about fifteen minutes before we cast that vote. So we, we don't take these decisions lightly.
I appreciate that. And it was nothing in particular. It's just a general thing that I've kind of noticed as time has gone on. Anybody have anything further? Tom?
And, and several of us have noticed that and, and I appreciate your, your concern and your interest in, in variances. Obviously if somebody's taking a deck down and wanting to put one back up in the same place, that seems to make sense, especially if it's only a two-foot encroachment on a fifteen or twenty-foot setback. But if they want to put one up that's fifty percent bigger and really encroaches, then you have to think, you know, what's that going to do to the neighbors of the neighborhood and stuff like that? So hopefully everybody's paying attention to those kinds of impacts as well. So. I, I'm sure there are obvious variances, but there are others that sometimes density wise or whatever come up. It seemed like you really have to sit back and think, why did the board approve that? You know? And I, I don't know if there's a way to try and, and help people understand. But when we get a hotel that, that double, triple, quadruples the density in an area or something to that effect. Or apartment building or something like that. A lot of people in town question that. And so. It just, it just puts a cloud over, I guess, the whole zoning issue. And I just urge you to continue to, to keep that in mind and be careful about it. And I would, I would beg to differ with you that your job is somewhat to convince the board. I mean, everybody needs to present their opinions and their feelings and, and see if that can sway the board. I wouldn't want to try to, to have an opinion and not share it so that, that people don't. Know what you're thinking or what your leadership might be or something in that effect. I, I think you need to, to step out and let people know there's concerns.
I, I think that, and I'll say this is probably a first time for this board in particular. I think that almost everybody on the board when they're voting is rather objective. And I'll continue to make the assumption that people are going to be objective. The only thing that I will do in the interest of maybe motivating a, maybe motivating a petition is. Make sure that facts are addressed. Cause I think a lot of times, and actually let me rephrase that. The majority of the time a petitioner comes before us, there is some level of emotion that's being portrayed in that. And ironically, you'd think it would be mostly by individuals who are looking to work on their personal property or their homes. But you, you get it just as much from businesses where, where, you know, this is, this is what we've wanted our whole life and this is how we want to do it. And like, well, there's some planning that should have gone in there though. So. I, I, I would agree that, you know, there is a need to make sure everyone has the facts, but I in no way would want to, you know, reach across. The board and say, hey, why did you vote that way? Why would you do that?
Well, no, I understand that.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think part of our hearty conversations that we have is getting our point across without making it sound like a demand.
Right.
So I, I think to some degree, we are trying to influence with our opinion of, of how we're reading the points of interest on the, on the petition.
Okay. And I know the zoning board has to act on points of interest or points of law or whatever, and they have very strict rules and guidelines. So as long as you're getting those facts out there and they're not giving you the same answer for every five steps, then, then you're probably getting real information. But I've seen situations where they kind of give you the same answer. Maybe they changed two words around or something for all five of the, the points of law. Kind of go, well, that doesn't sound like it's real to me.
I will say in fairness, there are a few attorneys who like to bring it to our attention that our points of law. We have overlap in them. I think it's the second and third bullet are technically, or that they have been tested in the courts as being the same, even though they are worded differently. So, you know, that I, I think maybe we should take a look at those points of law and see where, where we should be. But at the same time, I, I totally get what you're saying. And some of the time it feels like. No matter how you word it, you know, somebody wants to build a garage or somebody wants to build an in-law apartment. Because they have an elderly in-law that they need to support. All those bullets are going to read the same, all the way down to the unnecessary hardship. It's going to be the same thing. My in-law is suffering and needs this place. My in-law is suffering and needs this place. You know, so it really depends, I guess, on, on the case.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks. Appreciate the work you guys do.
All right. We all set? Thanks, Rod. Thanks, Rich. Appreciate all your time and the effort you guys put in.
Thank you so much.
Next on the agenda, our library is here to give us an update. Here's Chair Deb Koval and Library Director Yvette Kauzer. Good evening. Is this an annual meeting or is it just seem periodic?
No, it's annual.
Is it annual?
I want to see it.
Does seem like it wasn't longer.
Well, good evening. Thank you for having us back. I'm Deb Koval. I am the Chair of the Library Board of Trustees and I'm here with Yvette Kauzer, our director. And we also have Janet Krupp, the Library Board Treasurer here with us tonight. So if you have any questions or comments as we go through our update, please feel free to, to stop us. We're happy to answer them. I guess we're going to start with the building. So we came before you last year and I think we mentioned that we had talked with SMP Architects and they'd been doing, helping us walk through a site selection. For a possible future library. And we looked at a number of different sites. And so there were some things that came up that we were really excited about. We looked at the current Heinenberg site that we've had, the current library site. We walked the MYA property. And so there's lots of exciting ideas we have. Unfortunately, we are, have a lot going on with the current building, which is really where our focus has been now. So the big thing that I think is before us is our elevator. We have an elevator from nineteen seventy-nine and they don't make parts for it anymore. So one of the things we're working on is getting quotes and looking to replace that because you have to have an elevator in a building like ours. We also have issues with our chiller and HVAC. So we're looking at that. We're trying to take a really comprehensive look at it, having an energy audit done so that we don't just sort of piece things together. So we're trying to do it the right way and hopefully that will be effective. We also, you probably have seen the granite steps, like with a lot of old buildings, when you take things away from the building, you see what's going on underneath it. So we did find there were some issues going on underneath the granite steps. And the staff is working with some engineers to see what we can do to reinforce that area and get the steps finally finished. So. Yeah, that's fun. We do have some other things though. We did replace our security cameras throughout the buildings and grounds. And we replaced the fire panel in the spring and we really appreciate the help that Jonathan Diaz, the town's IT Director. And the Merrimack Fire and Rescue helped us with that. So we appreciate that. So lots of things with our current building. We did get new carpeting though, and that looks wonderful and people are really excited about that. So. And I think I may have stolen that from you, Deb. So I'm sorry, but I wanted to have something positive to say after sharing all of those things. So. If you have any questions about the building, I'm happy to answer in any way I can. So.
Good.
Okay. So, thank you, Deb.
Sorry. I had to end on a high note.
Paul does it all the time.
Moving inside. Moving to the interior of the building where the carpet is, the new carpet. So I, I was looking over my notes and my director's reports on the calendar and, you know, it's like a, a whole year. You kind of forget what happened in the spring and in the winter. And, you know, we only just removed our Plexiglas dividers that were on the, on the desks in the spring. You know, like March and went to, you know, optional masking. And I just, you know, I just thought that was years ago. But it wasn't. It was just this spring. So one of the other things that we had to do, we had all of the soft seating in storage in the clump room kind of stacked behind this folding wall we have. And that all came out and that was, that was something, you know, that was, that was a big project to get those out. And one of the reasons why we needed to do this, obviously to, you know, kind of get back to normal. But also because our friends in the library wanted to have their book sale in June and start that up again because they had canceled. Their book sales. And so when they had done book sales before. We spread out all over the library and took over the Lowell Room for the paperbacks and the Henderson Room where the teen books are. For the DVDs and the music and everything else. And that was really what we found out that was really intrusive on, on business. You know, people using the library and, and searching the shelves and things like that. So. I asked the friends to just keep it in the clump room. And if we needed to have some overflow, we could block off part of the parking lot and, you know, June, it's a nice day. So we managed to have the June book sale and then also the September book sale for the friends in the clump room. Totally fine. Lots of people attended. People were very happy to get back into a book sale. And it was good. It was fine. You know, the friends haven't decided when they're having their next one. They tend to have their winter one at the end of June, beginning of February. It's always like not Super Bowl weekend, but either right before Super Bowl weekend, I think, whatever. Whenever the sporting event happens that I don't pay attention to. But I don't, sorry, man. But yeah, so when we, we did the, we brought the soft seating out. And then we also were able to get a new computer table. It's new to us. We got it from the Wadley Library. Because they were getting rid of theirs. So we got that. And then we were able to reconfigure a lot of the floor space just to create more seating. And we had a new magazine shelving installed. Where there used to be carols in the, in the back, like North End. And now we just have all of the magazines. All kind of in a nice flow. We talk a lot about flow in the library about how a patron might move through the building and. Is it logical? You know, so that was a really nice improvement. And then of course, moving the copier and moving the computer table and spinning it around, we moved the copier. Closer to that because that's actually our print release station too. So instead of having it be, you know, this far apart now, it's just all in a nice, pleasing zen shape. It's probably not zen at all. Over the summer, we also replaced the main stairwell railing. That was brought to our attention by Joint Loss. And when Joint Loss brings something to our attention, we take it very seriously. And we had a company come in and. Replace that. It took two days. Should have closed, closed the first day. Didn't realize that, but when you see, you know, blow torches and sparks and smoke and things, you realize, oh, I should have closed. But we closed the second day for that, but you live and learn. So moving on to services in this building. You will remember last year when we came before you, the board was doing a pilot program of. Having a fine-free program and eliminating fines. Decided to go ahead and eliminate fines and that's been very successful. Materials are still being returned. That was the one thing they were wondering was, were people still going to return their materials if they didn't have to, you know, have this penalty? Yeah, they do. Totally fine. And other things that we've moved back to normal. We resumed attending all the outreach events. Now that there are outreach events in the town and schools and things, our children's services staff have been at every single one. They've visited the schools and they were, we were all at National Night Out. And just really trying to get out into the community and be where, where our, our residents are. We did a Halloween, we did the town's Halloween party, winter carnival. And it was just great. They just really liked being out. And I think the patrons like seeing our staff out there too. Kind of, you know, exciting to me. We purchased a cash register. This was another kind of just little item that the, when the town auditors come, they. Look at the financial controls about how we're managing funds that come into the library. And said, you know, you should get a cash register. And it's a little bit complicated because you have your cash register and then you have the account for the patron. And you just have to remember to, you know, make the note into places, but also that's worked really fine. And we have a very good procedure. I have not been trained on the cash registry yet, but that's okay because the staff have. And then I also talked to you probably last year about the Rogers Memorial Library in Hudson, joining our consortium. And they did join in April. And that's been great, you know. So now what this means is your Merrimack Library card. You can go to Hudson, if you happen to be in Hudson and stop by the library and check out materials using your Merrimack card. That also means you'll see their items in our catalog and you can request that they be brought over to Merrimack to pick up here. And then programming, again, all returned to in-person. Our children's services really utilized outdoor spaces in town, different parks that they had storytime at. They put up several storytime, story walks in the trails. And they did a lot of their programming outside. And now they're back inside with inside storytime, very traditional like we used to have. For adults, we've had paint nights, musical performers. There's a musical performer performing right now. For adults, we've had paint nights, musical performers. There's a musical performer performing right now at the library. And the adult staff also are creating these take and make craft bags for adults, which are hugely popular. Let's see, we did our trunk or treat last month at the library. That was a great turnout. I think we had four hundred or five hundred people come through. And we had really wonderful help from one of the officers. Officer Gagnon was great with his patrol car. And there was, I heard there was a kid who was dressed as a police officer and another kid who was dressed as like a crook. And they were allowed to get into the police car, one in the front and one in the back. And it just, you know, makes a kid's day and probably made the parents' day, too. So that was really nice. We were glad to do it again. We are again offering our passport acceptance facility services. So if you have to update your passport or get a new passport, you can get on our website, make an appointment. And, you know, we can take care of that for you. We don't have services in terms of taking your photograph. But otherwise, we'll accept the application and mail it for you. It's been very well received as well. One thing I wanted to note, last year I came, I think I came to you and said that we were working with Laura's World Fund. And we put a caring cupboard in the teen area at the library, and that had its one-year anniversary in October. And over the first year, our cupboard distributed three thousand and twenty-six food items to the community. And that's just brought, you know, it's brought, it's brought some teens in, but it's just really a great, I think, a great service, you know, for the library. We just received a hundred dollar donation from a resident just towards the cupboard. So moving on to the collection. We started a seed library. I don't know if you've heard of seed libraries in libraries. Basically, this is, we're working with a group called the Moose Mountain Seed Savers. There is a resident who is part of the Merrimack Garden Club who approached me and said, I'm with this seed-saving group, and we would love to have you host a seed library. He said, sure, you know? So they are managing the collection, and that just means they kind of curate the seeds and make sure these are heirloom seeds and not, you know, I don't know, chemically modified seeds. And then we have them in binders, and when it comes time to plant them, you can take a seed, take a pack. And they've divided up all the seeds into what they think is an appropriate number. And and then you go do your thing and start your garden. They're also going to be helping us with some programs about seed saving and, you know, gardening basics and just kind of that, you know, food-to-table idea of where does your food come from, you know? So it's just a neat, neat thing that was easy to do because someone else was taking care of it. One other thing I did want to mention is that, and you may have heard this, the libraries are making the news now because of challenges in the library. And this is, this happens, you know, it happens when it happens. But, you know, our mission as a library is to collect broadly and have a variety of items in the library. So, you know, it's something that if if someone doesn't like something we have in the library, then we have a process to challenge that, you know? Or if you, we bring a program in that you, that someone might kind of not not appreciate, we have a process for that, too. And, you know, basically, you, you know, someone can go through the process, and it's really a complaint that's brought before the Board of Trustees. You know, there, there seems to be a wave of challenges for displays, programs, things in the collection, could be digital items or print items, and just let you know there's a process. So that's, that's something. Moving on to staff. So in the summer, we had a student intern come from the Impact Academy in Nashua. I was contacted by their, someone at their school, and they said, oh, they work in the school library, and they want to have some experience in a public library because they might want to be a librarian. And so they came and worked with us for a month, and they worked with me in administration and in the Youth Services Department and in technical services, which is how we catalog the items. So they got kind of a broad experience working in a library, and it was, you know, like a work experience for a student, so that was really nice. The New England Library Association Conference, which is a regional conference, that was actually hosted by NHLA, the New Hampshire Library Association, we held it in Manchester, so a lot of our staff got to go. And this was the first time we had an in-person conference in, I don't know, two or three years, and it was fantastic. So we had our staff able to meet their colleagues from all over New England, and we were able to host, and it was, it was really wonderful. You know, we still have staff turnover. That's kind of where we are. And then just the last thing I'll say about about staff and staff development is I am completing my term as past president of the New Hampshire Library Association in December, but I am continuing my term as the Gmail Consortium President because that is a longer term. Back to Deb.
Sure. Thanks, Yvette. So the trustees, just a few things we're doing. We held a retreat where we had a chance to get together and, you know, have a meeting that wasn't a board meeting that was, we weren't dealing with monthly business and just to establish our goals and some of the things that we wanted to work on. Obviously, a lot of that is focusing on our building projects and things of that nature. We also have been working on our budget, so I know Yvette will be giving that over to Paul and Tom. And we are always seeking alternates. So if anybody is interested in getting involved with the library, being an alternate on our board is a great way to do that. We also have other boards that work to support the library, and I just want to take this opportunity to thank them. We have the Friends of the Library, who, as you've heard about, their wreath auction and their book sale. And then we also have the Merrimack Public Library Development Fund, who are very helpful in supporting the library. So our, oh, I also need to thank the Garden Club. That's right. So the Garden Club, in addition to a member helping out with that Seed Savers, they do a great job maintaining the grounds at the libraries. They really do a wonderful job planting things and cleaning it up, and we really appreciate that. And we also want to thank people in the community who continue to be very generous with their donations. And Dr. Quimby, who established over the last year or two the Memorial Fund in honor of his son Barry Quimby, which we are very grateful for as well. So we have a lot of support in the community, and we really appreciate it. And we're always happy to have more people get involved with supporting the library. And I don't want to do the same thing that everybody else has done, but yes, we greatly appreciate the, all that the people in town and town government do to support the work of the library, from Paul to Tom to Jonathan, Public Works. Everybody is just really cooperative and helpful, and we appreciate that.
Very good. Glad to hear it, of course.
Any questions for us or comments?
Does anybody have anything?
It must feel nice to be able to be person to person, huh? Having the residents come in and it's open.
It's nice, you know, and they're happy to be back, you know?
And you are welcome to come down anytime to have a tour, to visit the library.
See our carpet.
Yeah.
Barbara?
Just so that you know, I don't know if Yvette and I were on the two seventy-fifth
Yep.
Anniversary Committee together. The chair that Chuck Maur did is currently here in Town Hall. It's in the council chambers. And are we looking for a permanent home for it? Putting you on the spot, I'm sorry.
We have a, sorry, we have a meeting to discuss that coming up to go over the bridge and fundraising and what do we want to do with the chair? So that's coming up with the two seventy-fifth in December, and from there, we'll take it. But if not, it might be up here as the chairperson's chair.
I don't want to talk out of school, but we had a meeting last night, and he sat in it, and I think he enjoyed it like a throne.
It was in the library.
Yeah.
For a very long time until I said, hey, we have to move this because I'm putting all the furniture back.
Yeah. So that's why I just thought I'd tell you where it's living now.
It's very comfy. It's beautiful.
That's what I've told them because they don't think it is, but it's, I just.
I just thought you, I just thought you felt important in it.
It doesn't rock. That's the only problem for me because I have a little bit of a rock habit. So but that was the one that Chuck Maur built in the parking lot.
No, he didn't build that one in the parking lot because I asked him, and he built a different chair in the parking lot. But that one is, the the anniversary chair is wider
Yes.
than, like, if you want to sit in his regular chairs, we have two of those at the library that are also, I mean, they're surprisingly comfortable. Because you don't, you.
Yeah, you look at it, it doesn't look like it would be, but.
No, it's good. And you can rub your back on it. It's like a bear.
Alrighty. Are we here for good? Thank you, guys.
Great. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thanks.
There's no public hearing this evening. Next is legislative updates from our state representatives. I don't see anybody here, so I, we've received one email from Morning Mooney, and I will read it for you, an update on November seventeenth. She says, greetings. Number one, on December seventh, twenty twenty-two, the newly elected members of the New Hampshire House will convene to be sworn in and elect a Speaker of the House on Organization Day. Committee assignments and leadership positions come thereafter. As of this writing, the results of the general election give the Republicans in the New Hampshire House a majority of two hundred members and the Democrats with one hundred ninety-nine members. There are at least sixteen recounts statewide that have been requested, including Merrimack's own state rep race scheduled for this Saturday, November nineteenth at nine AM. And number two, she has the bill filing period for twenty twenty-three is open again until November twenty-second of twenty twenty-two at twelve PM. And then number three, one last detail, the Merrimack House delegation will be known as Hillsborough County District Number Twelve, not Twenty-One, after, which will occur after the December seventh, two thousand twenty-two date, and this renumbering is a result of the redistricting last session. Respectfully submitted, Representative Morning Mooney. And Paul, you, nothing else? All right. Nobody has any comments or?
Well, and congratulations to Nancy Murphy and her
Yes.
win to become a new state rep or again a state rep for Merrimack.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank all the voters. It was a pleasant surprise, a welcome surprise, and ready to go to work. We were there today all day, so.
And here all night. That's wonderful.
Yeah.
Alrighty.
Be careful what you ask.
Honest to goodness. Thanks for that, Tom. All right, Town Manager Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We were planning a walkthrough of the John O'Leary Center on December fourteenth. We got word today that the Adult Community Center would like to host it on a different day. Went back to them and said, well, propose some times and some dates for us then. They would like to do it at night with, on a separate night, so the council could come and enjoy refreshments and see all the good that has gone on and all the improvements that were made to the John O'Leary over the last two and a half years. So and it would not be possible without the Town Council's support and their support as well. They put their own money into it as well as helping with the town, helped in bigger projects that related to the building and the footprint. So just stay tuned, I guess. But I did want to tell you that because I know we were talking about doing something on the fourteenth as well. But that is not on anymore as of right now, so.
Could I suggest maybe consideration of, like, before one of our Town Council meetings?
We, well, you know, you have, you have, you have a representative that sits on that board at the end of the table, and I'm sure he'd be more than willing to bring that back to them.
We could have just coffee and stuff before our meeting, like at six thirty or six, right? I mean, that's something that the council would consider rather than a separate evening, I would think.
It all works for me.
So could you bring that as a possibility?
I'm, I'm prepared to alert the John O'Leary Committee that they should present us some dates for us to consider for their entertaining us of an evening. And our next meeting is the first Monday in December, I believe.
But I would be more receptive to a date that's connected to one of our meetings. So you could pass that on.
I well understand, and I know you understand that committee. Thank you.
That you understand that, you understand that we understand.
All right. Okay. So.
Alrighty.
And that's all I have for our manager's report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. All right, there's no consent agenda, nothing under old business. Item one under new business is the council discuss Merrimack's representation on the Lower Merrimack River Local Advisory Committee. Has the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services seeking up to two individuals interested in serving on the LMRLAC? Okay, this is, we've had two members on for years now. And we, I don't know if this is a new add-on for two positions or if it's always been there and we just didn't have it filled.
This was actually, they reached out to the chairman and basically said that you have some positions that if you would like to request or appoint people to this commission, we'd be more than happy to accept those. So in years past, we did have two people. And we, I believe Becky is trying to reach out to see if those two people would be interested. But I, I want to say, and forgive me, but I want to say, I thought we had a total of four.
We do. No, that's why.
And we only have two.
We only have two representatives.
We only have two, but there's a total of four, so we would need an additional two on top of the two that are currently serving.
Right. And I didn't know, my thought, I just wasn't sure if that was a new thing or if we just didn't have.
I don't believe, I think we've always had four, and we've only
We just only.
Only did two.
Okay.
Wasn't there someone who had expressed an interest recently?
Yes, she's sitting in the back of the room. So there are a couple of ways that we could do this. It's great that we have interest. However, with most boards and committees, we put it out there for thirty days. We see if there is, we put a public notice out there, we put a press release out there saying we're seeking volunteers. If we get more than two, or if so be it, the Town Council Chair and Vice Chair would interview those people to, to see if, for appointment purposes on this council. And actually, we should, like I said, Becky is reaching out to the two that are currently on there to see if they would like to stay on there or if they would like, you know, if they're pulling back on that.
Yeah.
So but that would be my recommendation, is that we follow our appointment procedures that the council has voted on in the past. So to basically, this is the kickoff. Hey, thirty days from now, it's open for thirty days. Anybody interested, please send their cover letter and resume to the Town Manager's office. And then the Town Council can look at that, knowing that we do have a qualified person who sits on the Conservation Commission. If the council wanted to just go off of one position, that's something else, so.
Is it, is it usually thirty days? I seem to recall it being shorter than that.
Usually it's thirty days for committee appointments, opening for thirty days. Unless the, unless it's been an ongoing alternative position, alternate position that's been open for a while, then those get shortened. But usually it's a thirty-day window that we seek. But the last one we did was the trustee of trust funds, and then we left that open, we had that open for thirty days.
That's a little bit different kind of position. I would, I would move if that's acceptable to the council to modify our plans and accept the one person who's expressed an interest at this point for one of the positions that's open. So moved. If anybody wants to second.
Okay.
So the motion is to, is to modify our rules and go ahead and accept the individual who's already expressed an interest and then advertise for the other position for the next thirty days.
And all, that's what I was looking for you to clear that up, so.
Just a friendly
Okay.
reminder, not a reminder, but a friendly amendment is Ellen, Ellen's name gets put into that motion.
I put Ellen's name in it. You hadn't mentioned it before, but I assume that's who it was.
Yeah, yeah. So that's the one who showed interest, so Ellen.
A move that we accept Ellen Colby into one of the two open positions, and then advertise for the other position for the next thirty days.
And it's second by Barbara. All right, any further discussion on that motion? See, no call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed or abstain. Seven zero zero. Thanks, Tom. And thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. And we'll get that out starting.
You might want to, I don't know if you want to put, there's four, four things that the committee, that the group does, or enunciated in that letter.
Yes.
Just, I don't know if you want to, in your release, put it or just put it on the website.
When we put out the press release, we'll include those things on.
Excellent. Excellent.
And that'll be out tomorrow or Monday.
Thank you for volunteering.
Thank you, Ellen.
Alright.
And we'll send Ellen's name in to the committee. Yes, they listen to who we, we say. And we'll make sure her name gets put forward.
Thank you.
Alright, next on the agenda. Captain Markey is here to present to the council a consideration of acceptance and expenditure of a grant from the New Hampshire Office of Highway Safety in the amount of twenty-six hundred dollars for the Merrimack Police Department for driving under the influence controls. Pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five B and Charter Article Eight, Section fifteen.
So the captain's here tonight to discuss several grants that we get on an annual basis. These have been for at least ten, ten years that we've been getting some of these grants, not longer, on some of them. So he's here for the next three or four agenda items, but these are all grants that we have gotten in the past, and it's from the highway safety. And he will explain the grants in more detail, but I just wanted to give that as a preclue to that these have been received year after year after year.
Thanks, Paul.
Yep, it gives us a chance to put somebody in the car dedicated to that patrol, so they don't get tied up with other things, so that, that's the advantage of it. The first is the DUI patrol grant, which is in the amount of twenty-six hundred dollars. That would fund eight four-hour patrols between the hours of nine PM and three AM. Patrols would focus on detected DWIs, would predominantly be held Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights as well as some holidays and during special events such as St. Patrick's Day in Super Bowl. Past year, we conducted only three patrols, which resulted in four arrests. Officers stopped thirty vehicles during the patrols and issued thirty-four warnings for various offenses as well as five summonses.
And you, Tom.
So I, I wouldn't argue with, with these things, but I, I want to try and understand, these are overtime officers, right? They're, they're paid overtime. Do we have sufficient staff these days for officers, or do we end up having to coerce?
That is an issue, and that's, that's, we did have funding for, for eight patrols. But we were only able to fill three this year. So part of that staffing, the other part of it is, the, when these occur, it's basically Friday, Saturday nights for the most part. They're not quite as attractive as some of the other enforcement details that happen during the day. So we fill what we can this year. We were only able to fill three, so.
So it's, it's voluntary for the officers to sign up for it? There's no coercion or, or forced overtime to to fill out these grants? So the grants are available, if people are willing and interested in working it, they're, you're welcome to do so.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further comments, questions? It's the pleasure. Lon.
Yeah, just as a follow-up to that, if we're not able to hold the number of patrols for the grant, we just don't accept that amount of money.
Yeah, we just don't put in for reimbursement for that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Ready for?
Yep.
So move to approve acceptance and expenditure of a grant from the NH Office of Highway Safety for the amount of twenty-six hundred for the Merrimack Police Department for driving under the influence patrols pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash lowercase b and Charter Article Eight dash fifteen.
Second.
Motion by Andy.
And authorize the town manager to sign any and all necessary documentation.
And seconded by Nancy Murphy. Any further discussion? Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Seven zero zero. Next item number three. Under new business, the council will consider the acceptance and expenditure of a grant from the New Hampshire Office of Highway Safety in the amount of two thousand six hundred eleven dollars and fifty-eight cents for the Merrimack Police Department for distracted driving patrols pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five B and Charter Article Eight, Section fifteen.
Yes, so as you said, twenty-six, eleven, fifty-eight is the, the dollar amount. This grant would fund eight four-hour patrols between the hours of seven AM to eleven AM or seven, or three PM to seven PM commuting times. The grant would focus on patrols to address distracted and negligent driving, which could be anything from using handheld electronic devices to distractions within the vehicle or failing to clear snow from the top of the vehicle. This past year, we conducted nine patrols. Officers stopped one hundred and eleven vehicles during the patrols and issued ninety-three warnings for various offenses as well as sixteen summonses.
Any comments, questions?
So just quickly, are you looking for people that you presume are distracted, or are you looking for erratic driving and then stopping them for being distracted?
I, I guess both. I mean, anybody that's distracted, whether they're on their phone, that they could be doing something in the mirror of the vehicle as they're operating the vehicle. Whatever, it could, it could be a lot of different things. We try and address all of that stuff.
Okay. Alright.
Anything further, Barbara? What's the pleasure of the council?
Move to approve acceptance and expenditure of a grant from New Hampshire Office of Highway Safety in the amount of two thousand six hundred eleven dollars fifty-eight cents for the Merrimack Police Department for distracted, driving patrols pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five B and Charter Article Eight dash fifteen. And authorize town manager to sign any and all necessary documentation.
Second.
Motion by Andy Hunter, seconded by Barbara. Like to speak to your motion. Any comments, thoughts? See none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Seven zero zero. Item number four hundred, new business. Council to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a grant from the New Hampshire Office of Highway Safety in the amount of three thousand four hundred dollars for the Merrimack Police Department for high-visibility mobilization patrols pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five B and Charter Article Eight, Section fifteen.
So as you said, thirty-four hundred dollars, this would fund twelve four-hour patrols consisting of Join the Click, which is a seatbelt enforcement initiative. Drives Over or Get Pulled Over, which focuses on DWIs. And You Drive, You Text, You Pay, which focuses on distracted and negligent driving. These high-visibility mobilizations are statewide coordinated events that are conducted on specific dates and times to enforce specific issues. This past year, we conducted six patrols. Officers stopped eighty-one vehicles during the patrols and issued eighty-five warnings for various offenses as well as ten summonses.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments?
This one seems to overlap some of the others quite a bit, but you're saying this is a state program where everybody's going out at the same time to do the same.
Yep, everybody that has that grant will, will do the, on the same day at the same time for the most part, so statewide initiative is kind of what they call.
So it goes above and beyond just Merrimack doing it in their town?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Pleasure of the council. Lon.
Not asking it from any point of opposition. But the follow-up on my other question. Is the lack of the patrols because of a lack of our officers volunteering to do the patrols?
Are you talking about the unfilled details that we had? Yeah, it's just difficult to get them to fill them sometimes, depending on, I mean, one of the issues is staffing levels. We are down quite a few officers right now, so they work a lot of overtime. So sometimes it's difficult to get them to do these on top of that. But we do what we can.
Now, we've, we've on occasion brought in officers from other communities to do, staff our details. Is that we wouldn't be doing that for this type of thing? Or that's just side of the road, you know, making sure nobody gets run over detail?
Yeah, we wouldn't be doing anything.
Yes. Okay. No, I appreciate that. Thanks. Right, pleasure of the council, Nancy?
I just got to move there.
Okay, with all the caveats?
Yes, yep. For the, let's see, I move the town council accept and expend a grant from the New Hampshire Office of Highway Safety in the amount of three thousand four hundred dollars for the Merrimack Police Department for high-visibility mobilization patrols pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash B and Charter Article Eight dash fifteen, and authorize the town manager to sign any and all necessary documentation.
The second.
Motion by Nancy, seconded by Barbara. I actually had looked down at the next agenda, I got ahead of myself, and I'm going, no, wrong number, no, right number. So any further discussion on your motion? Nope, see no further comments. I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Seven zero zero. And then the last one. Item number five, under new business, the council to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a grant from the New Hampshire Office of Highway Safety in the amount of sixteen hundred dollars for the Merrimack Police Department for speed enforcement patrols pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five B and Charter Article Eight, Section fifteen.
Okay, speed enforcement patrols, as you said, sixteen hundred dollars, which would fund five four-hour patrols. The grant would focus on patrols to address problematic motor vehicle speed issues in town. This is the first year that the town of Merrimack has received speed enforcement grant money as part of our package, so we don't have any numbers or issues from, from last year. It's kind of a new grant that they've, they've given to us, so.
Barbara?
So how will that work? Because we know that there's definitely an issue out on the ET with cars that are traveling well over a hundred miles an hour as they come up and head north. So how would that work in town? Because you're not going to be on, on the Everett Turnpike, you're going to be in the town.
Yep.
So you're just, it's an increased patrol? Is that what it is?
Yes, there's a lot of areas, and most of the officers know where these areas are, where, where we have heavy speed problems, so they spend as much time as they can on this, on these details in those areas to address that.
Yeah, I live on one of those. I, I continue to offer my part, my.
There's a lot of them.
Captain, do, do, is the state looking for a specific amount of summonses in this type of thing? Or is it just, so it's out of discretion?
Nope, there aren't, there aren't any quotas. The, the only requirement they have is to have three stops per hour for the officer.
Okay.
So if you have a four-hour detail, you should have twelve stops, and that's just the activity, they want to make sure the activity stays up.
Okay, great. Any further questions or comments? See none, I'll accept the motion if somebody desires.
Move, the, move, we approve and accept, move, move to approve the acceptance and expenditure of a grant from the New Hampshire Office of Highway Safety in the amount of one thousand six hundred dollars for the Merrimack Police Department for speed enforcement patrols pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash B and Charter Article Eight dash fifteen, and authorize town manager to sign any and all necessary documentation.
Second.
Thank you, Andy, for the motion, and the second by Barbara. Any further discussion on the motion? See none, call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, abstained? Seven zero zero. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Captain.
Thank you.
Item number six, under new business, the council's to be presented with two new positions to be added to the town's classification and compensation plan. Paul?
Good evening. Tonight I have Human Resource Director Sharon Marunich with me, so. She can answer all the questions related to classifications and other matters. Basically, what, I come before the council tonight to ask you to include two positions into our pay scale, our classification scale. One is a temporary part-time skilled worker. There have been numerous challenges over the last year to get qualified people in certain positions. And what this would do is allow us to hire a temporary person or a retired person to come back and work part-time to help us in the needs. You know, one, it would be technically, if it snows, he, a plow truck driver would be an example of something of that sort. But it will give me flexibility to be able to go out there and be able to hire these temporary positions until we can fill the full-time positions to help offset some of our, our workforce. We looked at it between what, what an equipment operator makes and a mechanic makes, and we're recommending that that be placed on a grade nine on our pay scale, on the non-union pay scale. Once again, this is not to supplant any union position, and I'll say that again, it's not to supplant any union position. It's just to get us to help, because we do have some retirees that have knows some of the situations we're in and have offered to help us part, on a part-time basis as needed in, in certain situations. They still live in town, they're willing to help us out. But I can't say, yeah, we're going to do that, because I don't have a position that has been approved by the town council to allow me to do those things. Funding for these positions would come out of salary savings for other positions, but once again, we are still going and looking for the full-time positions, and these people would be temporary, part-time, that if we do, once we get all our full-time positions filled, they would be asked to, to, that their services basically are no longer needed, thank you. That's the first one. The next one is a new position, and it's a Deputy Director for Public Works and Environmental. Over the last six to nine months, there's been a lot of environmental things that are coming down related to PFOA, EPA, on other things such as groundwater, the ground, the dirt, the air, our, our compost, requirements for our compost. In the MS four that you heard, that Dawn came forward, there's a lot of requirements with that also. There's a lot of, there's a lot of things out there that this position would be looking over and being in charge of to help with the environmental aspects of, of the town. The town has grown significantly in, in, in this environment. As you know, we do have a situation with our, our PFOA. We accepted the last meeting, we accepted a grant for a million dollars. This position would be basically overseeing that grant for the town, that million-dollar grant that we accepted from the state to help with point-of-entry systems and things of that sort. That's part of this job this person will be. This person will oversee the, you know, look at a MS four to make sure that we're in compliance and any other EPA regulations that are coming down, the environmental regulations that are coming down the road throughout the town to keep us so that we don't get in a situation where we're trying to play catch-up, but we're playing in advance. The other thing is, as you noticed, way back when we started with the MS four, there was always going to be some kind of position. We've, we've tried the environmental engineer position. We've had two people in that position. Neither one has worked out for the town. We're hoping that making this a deputy position, this position will, will take over and, and start with that MS four, and we'll get a higher-quality person and candidate for this position to oversee that program, which is a very important position, as Dawn has mentioned in the past, that it's very important to the town, because there could be, we're moving into the, the, forget the planning phase, now the rubber's going to hit the road phase and things of that sort. What I'm proposing is, there's a typo in the memo, it should be a grade twenty-three, not a grade twenty-four. That's on par with the other Deputy Director for DPW Engineering. They're, they're grade twenty-three, so that would be on the same par, would not be put above that person. And in the chain of command for this position, it would go the DPW Director, the Deputy Director for, for DPW Engineering, and then this DPW Director for Environment. So that would be the chain of command of DPW. But looking at needs for my organization, this is one of the needs. There, there are a lot of other things that are going on. You'll be getting a perlite study, but I won't call it a perlite study. A local limit study is going to be coming to the council sometime end of December, hopefully beginning of January. Been working on that. Things, things like that. That's what this position would be responsible for, those kind of projects. And looking out for the residents of Merrimack as it relates to environmental issues.
Thanks, Paul. Hi, Sharon. Did he leave you anything?
She's here to answer all the questions.
Questions about the, the classification and compensation plan?
Sharon, your microphone.
Our classification and compensation plans, all of our positions for non-union are on this plan. So anytime we want to add a position, we need to look at the wages and put it in the right place, along with other positions that have the same responsibility. So that's why grade nine for the skilled worker, and we already have a deputy director in grade twenty-three, so we chose that. Do you have any questions?
She's here to answer all your questions, so give her a lock.
Does anybody have anything?
No, I, I'd just like to thank you for bringing this forward. I think the environmental situation in town No, I, I'd just like to thank you for bringing this forward. I think the environmental situation in town has clearly gotten a lot worse or a lot more extreme in the last six to ten years, and, and we definitely need to focus on that to a large extent with the PFOAs. We're seeing that in the newspaper on an almost daily basis these days with all the issues with the MS four and things like that, so I think it's an important issue for us to deal with, and if I read this clearly, you're, you're funding this through just, through the budget that we have, you're not asking for additional funding?
Nope, this position for this year will be funded through the budget we have, yes. And the other thing I forgot to mention about that environmental position, they're the liaison with New Hampshire DES and the EPA.
And the EPA.
So, they'll have contacts in both areas that they'll be able to call on and, and work with and back and forth, and that's why it's, it's that high-level position because they'll be dealing with the higher-ups in DES, they will not be dealing with, you know, the, the, they'll be dealing with program managers at DES and program managers at the EPA, or even the regional director at the.
Somewhat executive staff, yeah.
Yes.
And I think this other position is pretty important, too, the, the part-time individual. I, I, I know over the past many months, you've been having a lot of trouble with openings, not being able to fill them, and yet we need somebody to get out there and plow the road or clear the, clear the side of the street or do something like that, and if, if there's an opportunity to, to work within our unions, within our programming and whatnot, to bring in somebody part-time, I think that's, if this solves that problem, that'll, that'll definitely help us. It will clearly solve it, but it'll certainly help us.
No, no, and like I said, it's not to supplant full-time positions, it's to get us so that we can provide a level of service to this community and keep the services rolling until we can get these full-time positions hired. And it takes some time to get a full-time person on board.
It does, especially when there's, there's nobody applying.
Right, yeah, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a long, it's not a long process, but there is a process with background checks and, and, you know, driving record checks, and especially if they're coming from out of state, there's a whole nother gamut that the HR director Sharon here has to go through and pull out her hair with. But I think she's been pulling out mine lately.
And she does a great job. Thank you, Sharon.
You're welcome.
Alrighty, Juan?
Do we anticipate an external advertisement or advertising or search for this position?
These positions will be like everything else, they'll be put up on, on our, our website, and we'll run through the human resource process that we have in place through our personnel policy, so these positions.
Thank you.
Alrighty, it's a pleasure of the council.
Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion. Go for it. Move to add the positions of temporary part-time skilled worker at grade nine and deputy publicly work, public works director, environmental, grade twenty-three to the classification and compensation plan, and to authorize town manager fill these positions as needed with, within the approved operating budget.
Second.
Question by Andy, seconded by Nancy Murphy.
Yeah, he said it was.
Any further discussion on the motion? None, or call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, seven zero zero. Thanks, Sharon.
Thank you, Sharon.
You let her off easy.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah.
Hey!
All right, item number seven under new business, council to review our two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three budget schedule.
It's actually two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four budget schedule.
It is, but I'm just, I'm just following along.
Yeah, no, Beck, it, it's funny because when Becky, we had this conversation today, and because we're doing it in January of twenty-three, she's thinking twenty-two, twenty-three, it's actually twenty-three, twenty-four.
Of course.
And basically, it's still going to be a Wednesday, Thursday budget schedule. What I've tried to do, though, is I've tried to make it so that we'll start on January fifth, will be the first one, which is a Thursday. The next week is the first council meeting in the new year, we will not have a budget meeting, and then the following week we'll have one on Wednesday and Thursday to finalize that. That'll give us enough time on the following week in, in January to, if we have a snow date, and if we need to, if we need to start our budget preparation or budget, budget review, we can do it that, that last week in January. The other thing that, of, of note is that going back and forth with the legal counsel right now, because they review all of this, and honestly, the one thing that we've been going back and forth on is charter amendments. Unless the council would like a charter amendment, they would need to let me know within the next seven to ten days, so we can get everything going, but I have not heard anything from the town council about charter amendments this year. So, that's not a, a huge press for the town council to have a, a public hearing in December for any amendments. The other thing that we're going back and forth on is, when do we really need the, the finalization and the public hearing for the budget? We might have to have a special meeting in February because of the way the month of February lays out now. The second Tuesday of February, I believe, is the thirteenth or something of February, so we might have to, I have it here, hold on a sec.
The second Tuesday?
Yeah, the second Tuesday of February is the last day for ratification of, of, no, there's, there's another one. The, the, is ratification of con, union contracts as well as petition warrant articles, and I believe that that will happen is on the fourteenth of February. So, we might have to have a special meeting on the sixteenth of February for the public hearing on that. Once again, I am going back and forth with legal counsel, but I did want to bring this forward so that the council knows in January what days we're going to start with the budget, and then as, as we get closer to that. The other, the other interesting thing or exciting thing is that I know you're all waiting with bated breath of when you're going to get those beautiful budget finders, and that will be the second meeting in December, which I believe is December.
In September.
December.
December.
December, December fifteenth is when you'll get them, because I know that at Christmas dinner, you want to take out your budget books and start reviewing those. So, but they'll be given to you on the, on the fifteenth of December this year, and we'll go over with our budget presentation and the town manager's budget, and then we'll start on January fifth, our first hearing.
Freeze frame, warm it.
Sounds like a threat.
Yes, we will, Tom. Yes, so, January fifth will be the first one, and then we'll do the, the, not the next week, but the following.
Alright, alright, sounds like an exciting time.
I can't believe we're talking about Thanksgiving and Christmas and New Years and budgets are ready for the next year, it seems like we just got done with the last town vote on our last budget.
Alrighty, is everybody all set then? Very good, thank you, Paul. Alright, item number eight under new business, council to be presented with information from the draft final report for the stormwater's planning study approved by the voters at the April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one annual town meeting.
So, I'll let Kyle, Kyle introduce the, the two gentlemen who actually did most of the work on, on this plan. One reason why we're coming forward to the town council is this is basically the last requirement for the town to get fund, that seventy-five thousand dollar funding, they have to present their findings to the town council. And Kyle will be, you know, giving you a, a brief, they'll be giving you a PowerPoint presentation on what they found out there, and for those that don't know Pine, Pine No. Shores, that is up by Babuza Lake in the Long, Carter Road, Longa Road, that area up of, in that part of town.
Just past South Babuza Lake?
Just past, yes, past South Babuza Lake Road, up in that area of town, and they spent many a day walking around that neighborhood and checking it out. So, without further ado, I'll give it to Kyle to introduce the gentleman who did the study, and take it away.
Thank you, Paul. Good evening, town council. I'm really happy to be here to present this project for you tonight with me here, and I'll let them introduce themselves during the presentation, but representatives from our consultant, AECom. Don Twomley, our town engineer is here as well, and Deb Loyzell from New Hampshire DES is here. And it's, it's been a great partnership and, and a really great project. I did want to start by kind of reminding everyone where, where this started. The council, for those who've been on for a few years, will recall, probably three years ago, we had a couple of really bad winters in a row, a lot of freeze-thaw cycles, and we had a couple of citizens groups from different roads in town come and talk to the council about how terrible the gravel roads are. And, and the council was certainly receptive to that, and, and as is Public Works, we've long wanted to get all of our gravel roads paved, it's, it's kind of a long-term initiative for, for Public Works. So, the council sort of gave us direction to look and, and see what we can do. At the time, our only budget estimate was kind of a cocktail napkin estimate on what we thought it would take to do the, do a project where we could pave the roads, add drainage, but most importantly, treat the drainage before it went into the lake. And that was the, the really most difficult part of the project that I thought, these guys made it look easy. Well, exactly, right, because we, the town does not own any land next to the lake, so I wasn't sure how to accomplish that. And I had, you know, kind of a, a big number in our drainage master plan, and, but we really hadn't sunk our teeth into anything substantial. So, two years ago, in two thousand twenty-one, there was an opportunity to get grant funding from DES for a planning study through the Clean Waters Sewer Reserve Fund, Revolving Fund, sorry. And so, we applied for that grant, and we were accepted, and it's a loan program through DES that was one hundred percent reimbursed, up to seventy-five thousand dollars. So, in April of two thousand twenty-one, a warrant article appeared on the town ballot for the project, for this planning study, and I'm happy to say it passed by about seventy percent. So, that kind of kicked off the project to, to where, where we are tonight. So, we went through the process with DES to select a consultant, our consultant who's with us tonight is AECom out of Chelmsford, Mass, and they performed the study, and I'll let them take it from here to give you the presentation on the, the study itself, and the projections and, and where we can go from here, so. I'll turn it over to Yan for now. Thank you.
I just want to say, I want to invite Craig Jenden here, he's my colleague from AECom, and thank you, Kyle, as well. Good evening, council, and my name is Yan, the project manager for this project. I want to thank the town of Merrimack Public Works for selecting our company to perform this very interesting project, actually. As Kyle pointed out, I think the project was funded by the, the, the New Hampshire Clean Water State Revolving Fund, and, and I want to acknowledge the team from Merrimack, the Department of Public Works, and Kyle, and Dawn, and their team. They provided a lot of data for us to get, you know, started on this project, and also after we identified some of the project concept, they helped us to make sure that these projects can fit with their programs, and to guarantee, to ensure a smooth implementation later on. I also want to point out that, you know, from Deborah's team, from DES, New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, and Deborah, and Jeff, and Dennis, they all have come to all those project meetings, and then they helped us to, and gave us a lot of examples from similar projects under the stormwater, clean water programs, and then they gave us a lot of comments, helped us to finalize the report as well. And our team, we, we work off the Chelmsford office, not too far from here, here we are, so you all have a handout, and so, and I'm going to go through the slides, please stop us, and if you have any questions, and much of the contents are contained in the report as well, which we have submitted a draft, so we're finalizing the report. So, this is the agenda for tonight, Kyle already mentioned a lot of the project background, and we're going to talk a little bit about our approach and how we get here, and next we're going to talk about the, the projects, how we arrived at these design concepts, because there are a lot of limitations as well. As Kyle pointed out, we have to work within the towns right away and the limited spaces in a already, already developed subdivision. And, and then we talk about the implementations and how do we move on to the next phase. This map on the slide here shows you the, give you a perspective about the, the site of the subdivision, Pine No. Shore subdivision, which is located in the northwest corner of the town of Merrimack. The blue polygon is the so-called TMDL subdivision. The TMDL stands for total maximum daily loads, it's the parameter of water quality measuring the point source and non-point source pollutants into the lake. So, so this figure just shows you the relativity in size of the subdivision to the TMDL basin, you know, one is about eight, sixty acres versus about two hundred seventy acres, about twenty percent. We have had a lot of meetings, this is truly a team effort, these meetings were held here and also at, in Concord, in the DES office, and some of those meetings were to fulfill the, the, the grant requirements, but through these meetings, we got a lot of information and we exchanged ideas so that we can move the process forward to develop those project concepts. A little bit more details about the project background, I mentioned the Babuza Lake TMDL, that is basically a standing parameter to measure the, the impairment of the lake. The lake has been basically indicated as impaired, for example, for the phosphorus here, this is in the EPA-approved TMDL parameter in two thousand eleven, so the pollutants can come from point source and non-point sources to the lake, and the subdivision itself is entirely within what I mentioned earlier, the, the TMDL watershed, and it's, it accounts for approximately twenty percent of the total watershed. But because the subdivision relatively speaking is a little bit more populated in terms of its population and development level, it holds about forty to fifty percent of the total population within that one hundred seventy acres of the total TMDL watershed. So, the, the, the major contributor from the subdivision for water, for pollutants mainly come from the, the gravel roads, most of the roads, the conditions are not very good, most of the roads are gravel, so those sediments tend to carry new chain, TSS, and, and also the, the phosphorus into the lake. And also, the other source would be from the septic systems used by the residents as well. Obviously, the projects that we are trying to set up to develop and all the studies that we do here, we're trying to make sure that we are consistent with the town's MS four permit requirements as well. Okay, this is a mission statement, and the goal of this project is to, through studies, and so that we can select a number of projects within the available land to improve the water quality in, in, the runoff in, from the subdivision into the lake. And these projects and should be developed, they can result in tangible and water quality improvement benefits. So, to do that, I'm going to demonstrate some of the analysis that we performed in terms of pollution reduction that these projects can achieve. Several keys to these projects includes that we have to develop these projects within the town lands right of way. And we mentioned that we want to improve the road services and getting rid of some of those gravel roads. And then also, we want to be able to engage the stakeholders to seek opportunities for public education on stormwater management. And we want to minimize their broader impacts. The project approach consists of three major elements. And first, we collect a lot of data through survey, through desktop analysis of existing information, soil data and geotechnical data, so that we can characterize the existing condition of the subdivision of our site. And secondly, we performed hydrologic hydraulic analysis and washout water quality modeling analysis to understand the pollutant loading, where these pollutants would come from, from what areas, particularly in the subdivision, and what type of surfaces, so that we can come up with ideas for those projects. Number three, basically are deliverables. We have, we produced an engineering report to justify and summarize our results and justify the development of those 30% level engineering designs for those projects. And then we talk about the recommendations, which includes cost estimates and the facing ideas for implementation as well for Public Works. This is the first step.
Can I interrupt you a second? What's a 30% engineering design plan? Does that mean?
Those are basically concepts. It has basically location, siting analysis, and it tells you where the site location is. It has some calculations for sizing for some of the key elements of the projects, but it doesn't quite take all the way. It uses the information available, such in this case, what we have right now, like survey, some soil information, but not all. So it doesn't, so it has those basic parameters enough for you to understand what you are going to do and maybe come up with some kind of units and quantities for how to build those projects that you can come up with a cost.
So for example, if we're designing a detention pond to hold stormwater, we would point and say, we're going to put one here, but we haven't yet exactly fully designed the shape of what it's going to take and exactly how much construction would be needed to put it together.
So it's the first 30% of the work?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem. This slide summarizes the first step. We did a survey. The survey was actually, as I mentioned, was done by Hancock Associates. They did the survey in May and June this year. The survey included topography, drainage structure attributes for the existing structures, and property lines. And they have the right-of-way survey as well. I think they got that from the courthouse mostly, from the existing information. And they did survey the edge of the roads. So those are the survey scope that we accomplished. And then I think Craig's team did the field reconnaissance in April and took all of those pictures. Do you want to talk a little bit about some of those pictures?
Yeah, I mean, we visited the site to, first of all, kind of document the condition of the roadways in the subdivision. We went out there a day or two after a decently large rainstorm. You can see in the first couple of pictures, there were some pretty clear washouts along the sides and across some of the roads. There were also a couple of drainage swales that were half-filled with sediment, which was notable. We also checked out a couple of the parcels that the town currently owns within the subdivision. Because while the, any implementation that we're doing here is going to be limited to the town's rights of way along the road, we are also considering using some of the town-owned parcels, and Yan will get into this a little more, to cite some more larger regional BNP's that could provide a little more treatment, get a little more out of what we could in the subdivision without like having to encroach on anything nearby.
One of the pictures shown there is actually the MS4 fall from the subdivision. So I mentioned earlier, so everything we do are trying to really tie to the town's existing MS4 program.
That's the town right-of-way, of the four pictures, the bottom left one?
Yes, yes, yes. Go. So step number two is to do some modeling calculations. And we need to understand the existing condition pollutant loading from the current subdivision, under the current subdivision condition. What Craig's team did here for water quality was that we used a simple state, water quality model, a wash-off model, it's a land use-based model, which links the land use of each type to the pollutant loading concentration per event basis. And it is annualized based on the annual rainfall amount to determine the total mass loading from different surfaces and then lumped together to tell you what the total nitrogen, total phosphorus, and total suspended solids from the watershed to the lake. And the figure here is basically a demonstration of the land use under the existing condition. And there's a legend there showing a different type of land uses, you know, from forest to lawn to rooftops to dry waste or to paved roads as well. So the table below is the results of this analysis under existing condition. As you can see that, if you recall the first slide, I mentioned the TMDL watershed versus the Panal Shore subdivision, the acreage difference. You know, the subdivision accounts for approximately 20% of the total area, but it has a lot of, you know, residential areas, it has the gravel roads. It actually contributes, you know, about maybe more than 40% of the total phosphorus loading to of the entire TMDL watershed. So if we can do something here to alleviate that situation, reduce the loading, we can do a lot of good things to improve the water quality of the lake. So this is just another view. These figures are all in the report. Another view of the existing condition water quality washout modeling results. The three panels shown here are for total suspended solids, total nitrogen and total phosphorus. And they are color-coded here, you know, the darker, these color hatchings are, indicates, I think, the more higher or higher concentration of each pollutants. And these figures kind of tells you, relatively speaking, where pollutants tend to come from in the subdivision. Where, for example, there are gravel roads, where there are probably a lot of the fertilizing or activities in the subdivision to maintain the lawns. That's typically where you can see, you can expect a lot of the pollutant loading sources. So that's what these figures are all about.
Can we ask questions, Longway?
Go ahead.
So obviously, a lot of these dark areas are along the roads. And you keep mentioning gravel roads frequently. Is gravel road somehow particularly bad versus asphalt or concrete or something like that?
Yeah.
And why? What's going on there?
The gravel roads tend to, they themselves carry a lot of, you know, fine sediments. When you have precipitation events and the runoff washout will wash those sediments downstream. And these sediments tend to also carry whatever pollutants like nutrients, nitrogen. So it's, and then they got washed further into the lake.
And where that's coming from is the way that the gravel roads are constructed is they're made of an aggregate. So for the most part, they'll be made of a certain size stone, but you'll have a lot of fines in there. And over time, as you have cars moving back and forth, that larger aggregate kind of gets pushed to the side and you're left with more of a compacted dirt road. And that is what gets washed off and makes its way to the lake. Whereas with asphalt roads, you're dealing with something that is essentially solid. And the only thing that can wash off of it is something that washed onto it in the first place. So it's becoming, if you were to pave a gravel road, you're removing a source. And instead, it's just kind of like a slide and whatever hits it gets washed away.
Okay, but doesn't, when the water hits that asphalt road and washes off into the ditches on the side or whatever, it's going to run just as much or worse, heavier flow along there and pick up fines and stuff like that, isn't it?
Or? It is, but the quality of the water coming off of that is improved. Because if you have rainfall hitting a dirt road, that road itself is eroding and contributing sediment. But if you have rainfall hitting asphalt road, there's nothing to erode and there's no sediment to actively contribute to the lake.
Some of the pictures, if you recall, you see a lot of erosion occurring in the subdivision as well. A lot of that happened on those poorly surfaced roads, including those gravel roads as well. And along the edge, not just on the surfaces, but perhaps on the edge of those roads as well.
So if you had an asphalt road, you'd get that erosion along the edge of the road? Because all of that water on the road would wash into that edge and you'd get 10 times as much flow on that area, right?
Yeah, I think in terms, for the asphalt roads, I think obviously you have to manage the edge. You can do some grass swells along the edge to alleviate that situation you just described. And
Curbing gutter as well.
Yeah, curb and gutter as well. We are going to talk about, if we build a new road or convert some of the surfaces into a nice paved surfaces, we are going to add drainage services to route the flow nicely. And we are going to also include some swells or tree boxes and hydrodynamic separators to help treat those runoff.
But as soon as you put that drainage in, now you've got to collect it somewhere.
Yes.
Instead of letting it go straight into
Those are actually good questions.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, we, yeah, okay. All right, so this goes into, once we understand where the pollutants are coming from, from what type of area, what type of surfaces, and then we start developing the projects. And to do that, we also have a three steps. You're going to try to pave some surfaces we just described. I'm very glad about those questions. And then once we pave those roads, we want to make sure that we provide drainage services. You know, we're going to add new pipes or maybe make sure that the pipes sizes are adequate. And for water quality and also for water quality, which is number three here, we're going to have to provide treatment using different means that I'm going to talk about to reduce the TSS loading and obviously subsequently the nutrient loading to the lake. Okay, let's see. So this is just an overview of the projects or project types that we recommend. I think this figure is actually on the exhibit. In summary, we have identified six groups of projects. They're, all of them are within the towns right of way. And I should have mentioned, there are several town-owned parcels that are currently vacant. So we want to take advantage of those because they give you a little bit more area and they allow you to potentially build some regional projects to treat stormwater runoff and to the best ability we can. So these parcels are identified there in the yellow hatches. So the six type of projects are the following. First, I think we identified paving the roads and providing drainage infrastructure improvements would carry a lot of benefits. So that's the first group of the projects. And second, are the, consists of tree boxes. And the tree boxes, I think Craig is going to give you a little more detail about those and I'm not going to steal the sounder. So we have altogether about seven different tree box locations. Those are the green dots. Five of them on Carter and then there's a few, two of them on other roads as well. And then there's a one hydrodynamic separators located at the Carter Road and Shore Drive intersection. And then the four, five, sixes are so, what I call like a little bit more larger scale, regional projects. And number four is that the, they are, the town, Richard Road, this is a bigger sized bio-retention cell or, or they can be called a rain garden. Number five is the, on the Mayhew Road, Stormwater Wetland. And the last one is on Mirren Road, is a stormwater treatment park. So with that, Craig, you can describe those projects?
Sure. So the first thing, when we did our washoff analysis, the biggest pollutant that we like identified, as well as being in the field, like I mentioned, some of the drainage swales were half silted in, was sediment. Dirt basically washing off of the roads and the right-of-ways in the subdivision and making their way out to Babuza Lake. So the first implementation that we're recommending here is basically road paving. And alongside the road paving, adding curbing and drainage infrastructure to convey the stormwater runoff from those roads out to the lake. What we're looking at here is kind of a hybrid of two-way and one-way roads. This is partially based on, for one, limiting the amount of impervious surface that we have to add. Two, we talked with some of the traffic engineers in our firm. And by adding one-way roads, we're improving the traffic safety where these neighborhood roads meet Babuza Lake Road. Optimizing site distance at those intersections and things like that. Minimizing impacts to butters in terms of how wide the new roads need to be because like one-way roads can be thinner than two-way roads. And as well, we are in some places limited by the available right-of-way width. Some of the smaller streets have much smaller road width to work with. In doing so, we'll be reducing the amount of ground that is susceptible to erosion. There's always going to be some amount of land susceptible to erosion, but we can take care of that with things such as making sure that the shoulders and swales are vegetated. We can add curbing to maintain flow onto that road. And we've also, as part of this, are proposing drainage infrastructure, which includes subsurface piping, as well as roadside swales that can also provide stormwater treatment and groundwater infiltration where the right-of-ways allow. Yep, next slide. One of the things that Yan had mentioned was the installation of things that are called tree box filters. And just to provide an idea of what these are and how they work, they're basically trees that are in an engineered box with a special soil media. They take the place of a curbside inlet that you might see. And stormwater basically flows onto the surface of this small rain garden. The soil column acts as a filter to remove sediment. And the tree and the vegetation basically takes up the nutrients, the nitrogen and the phosphorus that may be in the stormwater runoff. This has added bonuses of, for one, being relatively small in footprint. So they're very easy to put along the road within the town right-of-way. As well as, as we expand or as we pave these roads, there may need to be some tree clearing that takes place. And this can be a way to kind of alleviate some of that and return some trees back to the neighborhood where that may occur. As you can see on the bottom, they have pretty good reductions in TSS, phosphorus, and nitrogen. And I believe we have five proposed along Carter Road and one each on Rennie and Shore.
May I ask?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. How long before the sediment is fully impacted, the filter, media, or whatever you have in that tree? How long do they last? Do they have to be replaced periodically?
So the only, in terms of the filtration, the only thing in terms of maintenance that's required is annually, the mulch layer on top needs to be replaced because that's where the majority of the material being filtered out is going to get trapped. And in speaking with the manufacturers who make these things, they usually see the vegetation themselves, as long as they're, you know, cared for, they get water that they need. The only time that they die tends to be when they outgrow the system, which depending on the species is every four years or so, depending on where they're placed.
Thank you. The outgrow, the tree outgrows the system or?
The root ball kind of reaches the extent to which it can grow. Because they're placed within a concrete box, basically, with an underdrain. Yeah.
With the underdrain.
So stormwater basically passes through that column of soil. And then there's a perforated underdrain with a gravel bed that takes that flow and passes it off to the stormwater containment system.
So potentially every four So potentially every four years, you'd end up replacing the tree that's there or? It's a substantial amount of maintenance, I would think. I mean, you, every year, you're, you're taking off the top.
It's, it's not, it, it's three hundred uh dollars a year or so for maintenance is the estimate that I have from the manufacturer. And that can be done either by DPW staff, if they have the staff to do it, or landscape contractors can be hired to do it relatively easily.
Three to four hundred dollars per unit.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks.
So the, the third project on this list is uh something called a hydrodynamic separator. Um that's a relatively long-term for something that's basically a manhole that acts like a Dyson vacuum cleaner. Essentially, uh stormwater enters this, this manhole and it spins around in a circle and exits on the other end. And as that water is spinning, basically sediment hits the walls of the manhole and drops out like it would in my vacuum at home. Um these again are very useful because they can, they're manhole units, so they can sit underneath the road. Um and the, these can be maintained just how the town maintains their current manhole systems with a, a vacuum truck that just basically goes to the bottom and sucks out the sediment um that's there. Um we are proposing only one of these here and this would be basically placed at the downstream end of the Carter Road outfall. So all of the stormwater that enters the system in the subdivision would basically get one final kind of polishing step of treatment before it discharges out to the lake.
And that passes the MS four requirements for treatment?
It does. It's uh, these are uh accepted for treatment in uh every state that I've worked in to to either pre- for either pre-treatment or full treatment, depending on, on who. So um those were the three kind of uh right-of-way friendly projects. And so now we have three projects that are gonna be taking place or proposed to be taking place within the parcels that the town owns in the subdivision. Um we're gonna move from small to large here. The first of these is essentially a relatively um simple rain garden in at Five Richards Road, I believe. Um and here we would be accepting um runoff just from Richards Road. I either just as a curb cut or kind of a small roadside swale. Um and the overflow from this would go towards the, the existing drainage system in the subdivision. Um this would be planted with native species. Um it would provide groundwater infiltration, uh runoff, volume reduction and nutrient removal through similar function that I described with the uh tree box filters. Um we, one of the things that we did in our data acquisition phase was we looked at old septic testing reports that town had on file to kind of gi- give a, a laugh test as to whether the soils in these areas would be susceptible or would work with infiltrating BNP's. Um obviously, full testing would need to be done before these would be implemented, but we did use that as kind of a, a screening for, for these uh applications. Um a couple of other things to just mention as we get into these regional things. Uh we do recognize that these are being proposed in properties that about people who live in these places. Um so among the things that we're considering are, you know, minimum setbacks at least from property lines um to minimize impact to nearby folks as well as in, including, it's not shown in this screenshot, but it's shown uh in the plans here. Um screening vegetation within that buffer to try and provide some visual buffer so neighbors don't have to see this day to day.
Yeah, these considerations are effectively the uh more later phase will be implemented in the later phase. And the geo test, additional geo testing that Craig mentioned about that, something else to answer your question earlier uh beyond the thirty percent. So we're gonna do additional geo testing to make sure the soil are fully infiltratable to serve this purpose.
So.
Just a question before we leave this. How quickly does that drain?
So.
After a rainfall, I, I, I take it it's a rainfall garden, so it fills with rain.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
And how quickly does it drain?
Seventy-two hours is the uh, the requirement. And there's overflows to make sure that the ponding doesn't exceed, I believe it's either twelve or s- uh twelve or six inches. Um and then the requirement for the drain down is uh, I believe seventy-two hours.
Okay, and then it dries out?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just thinking about that from a public health standpoint with mosquito control.
So the.
Next one.
Yeah. So the next project, uh when we.
Go ahead. Okay.
Not to prolong the discussion. The bottom right picture seems to me to be showing me standing water. What about um, for lack of a better word, mosquito control?
So that standing water wouldn't last for longer than seventy-two hours?
Typically, the seventy-two hours is the maximum time for, for the retain, for the water. But ti- you know, a lot, based on the tip, uh the soil property typically drains much faster than that. Yeah.
So during the field reconnaissance that we did in April, um there were two portions of the town properties that we observed to be either kind of uh we observed standing water or like very wet soils. Um and so in these areas, uh we've proposed the idea of constructing basically what are called stormwater wetlands. Um these are similar to bio retention cells, except they tend to be um in areas that are perpetually or often wet, usually from a high groundwater table. Um the high groundwater table, we saw it in the field and we uh were able to back it up to some extent with the septic data that we had on file. Um these uh stormwater treatment practices provide infiltration, again, volume reduction um and nutrient removal. Um and we would basically be taking, working with the terrain and with the water table um to still use these parcels uh for some level of stormwater benefit.
Okay.
And then.
This is an interesting stormwater park.
Yeah, so, so the last project we have proposed here uh takes advantage of the largest parcel in the subdivision that the town owns, which I believe is on uh eighteen Merriam Road. Um and here, when we visited the site, there was a large portion, a large portion of the parcel that was upland. Um very dry, relatively flat and looking at um some past aerial that had previously been a residence there. Um and a, a smaller lowland portion of the site that again was like had standing water on it. Um and here we are uh proposing the idea of basically combining the two uh methods that we just talked about, the uh rain gardens and the stormwater wetlands. Um and adding some walking trails and educational signage through it um to basically create a, a stormwater park. Um in the uh storm, in the nutrient modeling that we showed previously, Merriam Road was a, a relatively high contributor of TSS because of the gravel roads as well as nutrients because of the, it's more densely populated than most of the other roads. So that means a lot of fertilizer usage and septic usage. Um and so this would serve kind of the uh two-hit punch of treating all that stormwater as well as um meeting someone like the uh public education requirements in the town's MS four permit. Um this would, I, I think it's really interesting. It was, it was fun to sketch out. Um and it would uh take water from the Merriam Road uh system, uh provide some treatment, provide some walking trails and then discharge back into the system for um to discharge down at Babusik Lake.
Right, I s- any questions? I think these uh particularly these large, uh three large uh regional projects are strategically located downstream of the respective drainage, contributing drainage basins. They're able to take the runoff coming down from the upstream uh land surfaces as well. And the so-called thirty percent design drawings are in appendix C of the report. So over in there, you will be able to see uh the details and callouts for those components that we have only screenshots on the, in this presentation right here. Okay, so I mean, obviously, all of those projects are driven by pollutant reduction. So this slide just shows you what kind of pollutant reduction we can achieve through collectively these six different types of projects that we have conceptualized in the subdivision. So again, we use the runoff wash-off model uh to compare the so-called future condition if we build those projects versus the existing condition which I have already shown to. So collectively for TSS removal, if we build those projects, you're able to reduce the TSS loading to Babusik Lake by sixty-three percent.
From the subdivision.
From the subdivision. And uh for total phosphorus, that's reduction is twelve percent and total nitrogen, that's eighteen percent. But keep in mind, I think the uh, the TSS also, the sediments also carries uh nutrients, total uh phosphorus and nitrogen. So if you account those, then the total phosphorus and nitrogen reduction will be higher than the twelve percent and eighteen percent. So you should somehow lump them together a little bit. Alright, um so now we move into these uh, the project summaries. And in the report, we have this uh table uh basically that evaluates the merits, the relative merits of those projects in terms of their pollutant reduction ability, in terms of their cost and O and M, a bother impact, uh the benefits to the community, maintenance and uh, and the exo- their ability to attract external funding. Uh talking to uh DES, I think uh it's seems to indicate that most, all of the projects are eligible uh for external funding support uh should the town go into the next phase of implementation. So this is just a summary of those. So. I am going to the implementation phase and cost estimate. I know this is probably in many people's mind how much this project will cost. Hopefully, there's no sticker shock over here. Uh anyways, and how to implement those projects, obviously the uh the, you know, there's a lot of strategic uh manuals here, I think by the Public Works Department and how do we do that? So we, after talking to Kyle's team, I think uh, we think it makes sense to subdivide this uh, the whole subdivision into four phases, relatively speaking. And phase one would focus on the Carter Road because that's kind of the, gonna be the main, main road. It's a two-way road and also it has a lot, uh some future improvement uh drainage system. So we want to build that first. And along that road, you can see the five uh tree boxes and uh, and you can also see the, at the end of the road, the hydrodynamic separator and uh, and the alfalfa stabilization, the MS four alfalfa as well. And then two A and two B, uh you can uh, the, those components would involve some uh the stormwater park in two A and then the uh so, the stormwater treatment wetland in two B. So two N, two B, they're, you know, you can either do two A or you can do two B. I mean, they're relatively comparable to each other. And lastly, it would be uh phase three and that would be on Longar Road, Richard Road, Donald Road and the Shore Drive North area. And that includes that bio retention, the small bio retention uh on that parcel of Richard Road and also has a tree box as well. So the cost estimate that we uh compiled, that they are certainly estimated uh based on the thirty percent level design. And we obviously, you, I mean, I indicated that we have some quantities, we have some items. So we use those quantities, items, for example, the areas of pavements, the length of the pipe. You know, we did try to size the pipe a little bit using the information we have and the number of manholes, the tree boxes, some of the unit costs, we tried to, you know, include those information to come up with the numbers. And we took consideration of the inflation, uh re- recognized some of those unit costs were old. And uh we had added about some contingency, right? We did. And then twenty-five percent of the contingency, for example. And we also added, you know, certain percentage of engineering cost to finish the, you know, rest of the design from thirty percent to the final. So that's kind of the number we come up with, you know, about three million dollars for all phases uh for implementation.
And the detailed cost breakdown of this is appendix G of the report.
Yeah.
So question, and probably Deborah, you may know better. What's Amherst doing for their MS four on Babusik Lake? Because there is no public access other than this for the town of Merrimack. And yet we're looking at three million plus. So what is Amherst doing since they own mo- you know, they, their property and access is on their side? And they don't allow Merrimack to use it at all. So what are they doing? Because that little bit isn't going to take care of the whole lake.
Great question. Thank you. Um so my colleague Jeff Marku, who wasn't able to make it today, is the watershed supervisor in this area. Um he's all inland of the sea coast. So he'd know more specifically, but I do know a watershed management plan was developed for all of um Babusik Lake. And there are some implementations that came out of that that were suggested. Um I don't know exactly what Amherst is doing for those specific projects. You're correct in stating that they are in regulated MS four community. So they're obligated to, to be evaluating this area and also other areas. I mean, as um Jan and Kyle have mentioned, I mean, this is a TMDL water body. There are other impaired water bodies as well. So everybody's trying to work both individually and collectively to improve the water quality here. Um my apologies for not telling you exactly, but I'm happy to get some more information. And what I can do is report back to Kyle so that he can report back to you. You're welcome.
Cause it seems to me, since we share, well, they've got the majority of the lake. So there may be some coordination of effort that is going to be needed. Um because obviously, i- if we get really aggressive and do our part, it's, it's a drop in a bucket.
Yeah, I can speak a little more to that Barbara, having worked with Jeff over many years now on the, the condition of the lake. And the lake is actually um much better than it was when we first, first started looking at this. And the primary reason for that is the work that Amherst did. Uh probably, I don't know, gosh, eight to ten years ago now, they installed a community septic system. So most of their septic systems now go to a community system uh where it treats the, the septic much, much better than the individual, you know, frankly, the stone and bucket systems that were there. Uh so the phosphorus levels in the lake have dropped quite a bit. Uh just switching hats to uh us, one of our favorite slides that we like to show you. If you remember the uh, the slide Sarita likes to show with the eighty-five communities and their sewer costs. Uh that, all those little bar graphs were over here on the left. The pro- the sep- the sewer system that's all the way to the right is the Amherst system. It's the most expensive uh per uh unit system in the state. And, and it, and this is what it does, is it treats the septic by the lake.
And to also help answer this question, I think the uh, there, there was a Babusik Lake watershed protection plan for the, the entire contributing watershed. And uh a lot of the projects that we mentioned here uh actually are pretty consistent with that. Very, very early recommendations in that watershed plan, obviously, that's even beyond, I'm, you know, very, very early. And that was uh two thousand eight, two thousand, two thousand eight, and then it was updated in twenty thirteen. Yeah, yeah, those are the old plan, yeah. But that's a great question, which actually is a very good step uh leading to our summary right here. Because uh my first bullet is about, you know, the design concepts that we use here. It is based on a holistic watershed approach. So we are not just looking at the subdivision. We did take a look at the holistic watershed and uh we look at the subdivision development level versus the entire, you know, TMDL watershed. So. And uh obviously, all the pu- uh projects are driven by pollutant reduction. And uh a lot of the projects here qualifies for external funding, uh should we decide to go forward. And the pavement and also the addition of uh drainage infrastructures, water quantity and water quality, that will be a improvement of quality for the residents of the subdivision. So I think people like that. And uh obviously, you can. And obviously, you can see some of the projects where we, wherever we can, we included education, public education, stakeholder outreach, engagement of components which will help the town satisfy the MS four requirements, those measures as well, right? And we make sure that the long-term O and M can be easily incorporated into the, the current operation and O and M programs by Public Works as well. And lastly, and we want to obviously fulfill the, the grant requirements. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jan.
So one more question. Have you, have you worked with the residents down there to understand this, this one-way street routing and stuff like that, the impacts that that might have on them or, or do you have any idea whether they're in, engaged or involved in, in this process of changing the streets to one way or forcing them to be a certain way or is this a change at all?
Yeah, the streets, the, I'm not sure they have seen this, but the, the streets where we plan to designate as one-way versus two-way, they're entirely based on the requirements of the roadway width that are currently in your design roadway book and also based on the current right-of-way width available.
As well as optimizing for traffic safety.
Right.
But to answer your question, these haven't been floated with the residents yet.
So this is, this would be brand new to them to suddenly realize their street is limited to going down to the lake and looping around and come back up another road to get out of there or something like that.
Right. Yep. And, and as I reminded, this was a planning study. So we, we haven't got that level of stakeholder involvement. Certainly on the stormwater side, there was a fair amount of involvement because as Craig and his team were out walking around and, and through the years, as our interns have been out in the area, we get plenty of resident feedback at that point. And, and they actually helped, helped us craft some of the results of the project, talking to a couple of butters.
Certainly, they're, they're vested in getting an improvement out there, I know, because they complain about the drainage problems and the, the washouts and all that kind of stuff. So I, I just, I wondered if we had any sense of, of buy-in by them as to change.
We didn't.
Flooding or anything like that.
We didn't specifically, but I would add that we get a number of calls about poor site distance at Babusik Lake Road as well. So certainly, it, it's an issue that, that people who live in the subdivision are aware of and the, to your point, I think, that if they got their roads paved and treated and a really nice neighborhood, they, I think they wholeheartedly adopt the one-way road.
I suspect that's true. Residents will see flooding condition improves because when we met them, they talked about how often their yards getting flooded. I think, I did not get into the details, but some of those new high routing, drainage routing will be realigned. So will take some water away from those flooded properties. I think you could, the report has those discussions as well, so.
Yeah, when we were in the field, there was a lot of people coming out and being, oh, make sure you get a look at this, this, this right here is a problem.
I, I figured as much, so I didn't know whether you had very much interaction with them or not.
Right.
But that's great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah. Have you anticipated much reconstruction in, like in the one-way road plan? I'm asking from a basis of concern about turns and whatever for fire safety.
Yeah, so what, what we're proposing is to reconstruct all of the roads, whether they're, they're currently paved or not. The currently paved roads are in really poor condition at this point and some of the roads that are paved out there were only paved because of the disturbance of the roads when MVD put their water line in and we were never able to, or it was before I got here, but they were never able to control the erosion. So the solution to the erosion was putting a, a small course of pavement, but it was never a reconstructed road. So this project would completely reconstruct all of the roads to town standard.
And take care of the, make sure that fire safety.
Oh, absolutely. Yes.
Thank you.
It would also correct some deficiencies in locations of roads. Some of the roads are actually located outside of the right-of-way, so we would address that issue as well.
Right. That's, well, that was one of my questions. I've always understood that by Knowles was, we didn't know where our rights of way were and, and so we've been able to kind of delineate that to a great degree.
Yeah.
And will there be takings by, just by, not takings because we already own it, but is that going to be massive encroachments?
There, there might be for a couple of properties, it'll seem that way. Like you say, we own it already, but it'll feel like that way when the road gets shifted back to the right-of-way on a couple of properties. The good news is we, we were able to get a really good survey early on because of the project that MVD did when they did their waterline project. Meridian Land Services was kind enough to give us all of their survey work, which the team turned over to Hancock and really helped create the, the, the base plans.
I'm surprised that you could pull it together, quite honestly. So that's, it was good to see all these thoughts and suggestions. I think, I, for me, it's the potential, you know, the piecemeal approach. You know, I think, was it Carter, the, the recommended, or the one you have as number one project here? That's likely the worst one from everything you've presented and that would go right down to the town right-of-way. And that, it's a good start and it would be a major hurdle overcome, I think.
Other than the main road, it's kind of a two-way road, it has the width right now.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. And so.
And that's the current primary.
I know, I, that's timing, I don't know when, all these things, with everything else that's going on.
Yeah.
It's, so, but, I mean, I think it's been recognized for years now, even before the more recent complaints about the washout roads a few years ago, that this has been an issue for the town. And I think the MS four problem has really helped push it along as well, but, so, but no, I appreciate your presentation.
Thank you very much.
A lot of the intriguing thoughts and ideas.
Kyle, does this, does this plan pretty much cover the requirements that we felt like we had to cover in finals or?
Yes.
You started out by saying we never even knew how we were going to accomplish this.
Right. It does, yeah. It, it accomplishes all of the, both the environmental and the operational goals.
I, I just think it's very intriguing. I mean, really, in terms of being able to accomplish several things at the same time with several different treatments and they all work collectively to be able to, to do it. And just in terms of the cost, I'm looking at four million, not three. Let's be realistic, we know in our deliberations not long ago, the things, and I'm not saying it's not worth it, I'm saying it's, it's, let's be real about it and from at this point on, that's when it's going to be our job, right? To see if we can get some funding.
Yeah, so what my plan is and, and ultimately, it's up to town manager and, and you folks. Up on my plan was to, we just passed the CIP process for this year, but we would include these projects in the next CIP, next summer, fall, when we start to put that together and then try and figure out where to, where to put the projects and how to fund them. Whether it's through grants, yes. Certainly.
We have a grant master right here, you have to understand. We've been very fortunate to be able to get grants to help us with these major things.
Yeah.
So he's spoiled us, actually.
Well, Don and Deb work, work together all the time, so they'll, they'll coordinate to see what's available and, and whether they're grants or through the loan program. Certainly, we always put our pitch into DES, I'll do it again here.
They will back you up.
To make the program a, a grant rather than a loan. It gives the town a lot more flexibility to, to proceed with projects.
We could be an exemplar for the state, you know.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Barbara had something.
Yeah, and this is more, I think, a Don question, although you guys may know the answer as well. From an MS four perspective, what's our timeline to complete the work? Oh, that's a tough question, sorry, Don.
She needs time to think.
Because I'm sure, knowing the government and regulations, that there's a timeframe in there somewhere.
We don't have a timeframe, but we have to keep working on our projects.
To demonstrate it.
And demonstrate that we're doing something because I just showed Kyle tonight that all of our projects together that we have on our list right now, we're looking at twenty-two million dollars. So we have, and this was part in there, so we have to keep working at it and as long as we can prove that we're working towards the end goal, I don't think they'll come and bother us, but, you know, we're trying to find funding, we're trying to, to get there and it's going to take time.
But this report demonstrates we're trying to do something.
Exactly. And I, and I used, if you read my annual report to the EPA, I used all of that and I also said it's going to take time. And then, and ultimately, it's the taxpayers that have to approve all of this and if they don't approve the budget for some reason, you know, there's nothing we can do. And I tried to point that out within our, our annual.
Because first priority is keep the lights on and the doors open.
Exactly. And this is going to be a tough year and, you know, we're well aware, so.
This, this report, if you remember, a couple of years ago, we did a drainage study. Couple of years before that, we did the sewer study. This is just another study that we have to help us plan for the future. And like Kyle said, is we have to come up with, with a funding mechanism that will make this work, whether it is all at once, a phased-in approach. Kyle and I and Tom behind me will have to sit down on this and, and figure out where this best fits into the plan. Remember, we also have another large drainage project going that's going to help our MS four over the next several years that we did a phased-in approach as well. So this is a plan, like our sewer plan, like our, our drainage plan that we have to let us progress. And if we're fortunate enough to get DES grants, we'll, we'll go that avenue. But if we're not, we have to, we have to plan for it and like Don said, we have a twenty-two million dollar nut that we have to crack over a number of years and we have to keep on chipping away at that nut. So it, while we have this thirty percent done and probably going to be looking at getting it a hundred percent done, so we have the plans because that's one thing that always worked in our favor is to have these plans on the shelf because there are communities that say, oh yeah, I'll do that, I'll do that, that, I'll do that, and then don't get it passed. And Merrimack's always been one to plan and make sure we have drawings on the shelves that we could take them off the shelf and go, we're ready, give us the money, give us the money, we're ready for your grants. And that's, that's, that's a testament to Kyle and his division, but that's helped us with all our bridges and it's helped us with some other projects and some other grants that we received. But it's going to take time. I, I don't want anybody from this area to think, hey, they got the plan, they're going to start this next year. It's going to take some time to implement and to look at and to work through the process with it and, and see where it's going to fall out with the, in the capital reserve, in the capital reserve funding and in our CIP as well. Because this is three million dollars that we were not budgeting for.
Right.
That, you know, if we, that, so we're going to have to start budgeting for it if we're going to do it through our capital reserve funds. If we're going to do it through a bond, it's something different.
It's a whole different.
So there's a lot of conversations that still need to be had between Kyle, myself and Tom before we can actually come up and say, this is how we're going to, this is where it is, this is where we're placing it and things of that sort. I just wanted to, to bring that up. You know, it's, it's a great report. I know Kyle's excited about all these, you know, water gardens and stormwater parks and, and you know, the, the Dyson, I call it the, I'm going to call it the Dyson Drainage, the Dyson Drainage System and, and, and it's a lot of innovative stuff that probably wasn't there five years ago. It's all new technology that, that has come out because as you know, as they said, we only have three parcels that we own out there. And to get drainage and filtration and, you know, tonight, we had to change our thinking a little bit because we've all been told that pavement bad, pavement bad, dirt good. And tonight, we were told pavement good, dirt road bad. So, you know, we got to kind of change our thinking with that as well, which is, we got to abrupt stop it and go, go in a different direction, which is, which is great that we've heard that. So there's a lot of good information that has come out of this report. We wouldn't have been able to do it without the seventy-five thousand dollar grant that we got from DES and we appreciate that. But, but it gives us a planning document for the future, so.
But I, I think we also need to remember, this is thirty percent of the plan, right? I mean, there's, there's still a fair amount of engineering that has to go in before any of this can be implemented. And that's, that's where rubber hits the road, so to speak.
Yep, good point.
But it's a great plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything further?
I don't need anything further from us. Does that have to be requirements?
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. And everybody, it was a great presentation.
Check. And hopefully, I'll see some more pre-applications from the town of Merrimack. It truly has been a pleasure working with Don and Kyle and the crew. I thank you all, the voters, and also the, the team from AECom. It's, it's been a pleasure and as you mentioned, it's, it's a great plan to have, to plan for the future. So hopefully, I'll be back here again.
Very, very good.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Kyle.
All right, before it's ten o'clock and we have to have a motion, my move to.
We'll make it.
Under new business number nine, council will consider the acceptance and expenditure of sponsorship donation in the amount of five hundred dollars from Xfinity to be used towards the Parks and Recreation Department's Turkey Scavenger event, hunt event, and the Welfare Department's Thanksgiving Basket event pursuant to R.C. thirty-one ninety-five B, article eight, section fifteen. And.
It's, it's pretty self-explanatory. Want to thank Xfinity for, for coming to the table. This is the first time they, they gave us a donation.
Is it the first?
Yeah, for, that I'm aware of.
Okay. I thought there was another one. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
I mean, appreciate it and they, it was pointed out in our, in our information that it was actually more than was necessary for the, the Thanksgiving scavenger hunt and we're using the balance for the turkey, the dinners and everything, so.
Yeah, which is, which is, there's a lot of people out of need out there.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, that's what it sounds like.
Could I say, could I say so moved?
Please.
Okay, I'm going to say so moved.
Motion by Nancy, seconded by Barbara, sorry, Andy. Any further discussion? See, not call the question, others in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Stay in the seven zero zero. Next, Senator, approval of October twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two minutes.
Move the minutes of October twenty-seven.
Motion by Tom. Seconded by Andy. Has, anybody have any, any corrections or anything that they found? All right. There's nothing further on the minutes? Call the question and the motion, all those in favor, yes, Nancy.
Oh, sorry. Just one correction on page three, on line, let's see, line forty-three. It says Department of Environmental Services to be used towards the PFAS rebate program instead of project.
Oh, what?
Program.
Program.
Works. The program.
Oh, you know what? And actually, the same change on, above that next door, number two, on line around twenty-six, PFAS rebate program instead of project. Oh, you know what? Multiple places, yeah.
Anywhere else, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Anything further? Call the question, all those in favor, the minutes of October twenty-seventh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained.
Abstained.
Six zero one with Nancy Harrington, I have to differentiate, I suppose, is abstained.
Six zero one with Nancy Harrington, I have to differentiate, I suppose, is abstaining. All right, comments from the press? Nobody? Comments from the public? Comments from the council? Nancy?
First of all, I'm sure I'm talking about for everyone, but I'll speak for myself. To have a happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Let's be thankful for our country, our state, our town, and our families, and each other. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you, Nancy.
Excellent, thank you.
Barbara?
And just a reminder to dust off your running shoes, because on Thanksgiving morning is the Rotary Club's 5K Turkey Trot. So hope to see you there. Thank you.
Anything further? All right. Yeah. All right. Dr. Woods?
I would like to wish my council members and staff of the town and residents a very, very happy Thanksgiving. And I make a motion, we adjourn.
Motion by Lon, and thank you, Lon, by the way. Seconded by Tom Kane. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Most are abstains, seven zero zero. Thank you, everyone.